I'd like to call to order the October 8th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Marusty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFattan, D. Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Here.
Mr. Rozlovich?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss litigation matters and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 104-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session? Can I second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and can we please stand for the Coach of Legions?
Let's just leave it. Yes, let's leave it.
Okay, we have one communication on the agenda, and I believe we have one more come in today.
Yes, that will be on the next agenda.
Okay.
It was the one about the parent. I believe this issue was resolved today about a parent's concern about their student's placement gifted in town.
Okay. All right, then number eight, we have some corrections to the minutes from the last agenda? No, the minutes of the June 11th, 2018 agenda. All right, just a correction to the high school assistant girls volleyball coach stipend? More or less than what was in the agenda?
I believe that it was half. In the past, the position had been split between two people, and so this is a full position.
Ah, gotcha.
He's not sharing it with another person.
Okay. And I just saw volleyball students leaving tonight after a victorious game, so Highland Park Sports, and I'm sure the students will update us a little bit, seem to be doing a great job again this year. It's very exciting. And then there's one more change to the minutes that looks pretty, just changing the day or something. And then number 10, we'll approve approval of the minutes for the regular public and executive session meetings from September 17th to 2018. Again, tonight, we've had three months in a row now, right? Just having our voting session and only having one meeting a month, so this is our getting back to our regular. For our students, typically, we have two meetings a month, not one meeting a month, like we did last month. And our first meeting is our, I'm sorry, I just got so distracted, there's a pair of jeans over there. I'm like, gee, why am I looking at a pair of jeans on the side of my wife's shirt? A pair of jeans in my line of sight, sorry. Sorry, everybody at home. John, maybe you want to pan over to the pair of jeans so people don't, people don't think I've totally lost my mind. But for the majority of the school year, we have two meetings a month, with the first meeting being what we call a workshop meeting, where all we're going to do is talk about everything on the agenda. And then at the next meeting, the agenda's going to be ostensibly the same, we might add a couple of items, but those items will be bolded on the agenda so we know which things have been added from one meeting to the next. The idea being, we don't vote on anything until we've talked to death at the board table, everybody's completely bored, we're all sure that, you know, we're all, you know, for the most part, in agreement. We might have a couple of people who might not agree with one agenda item here or there, but the idea is by the time something gets on the agenda, it's been discussed in committee, then it makes it onto the agenda, we discuss it in the workshop, if there are any issues or anybody feels uncomfortable with something, we get a time to hash that out, and then by the time we get to the voting session next week, we just run through the agenda. So it's a system we put in place to be as transparently, as transparently, as transparent as we possibly can be, and, you know, to give the public as much advanced notice as possible of what it is we're taking action on.
And just a point that you should pay, every second meeting, just about every second meeting is at a different location around the district. Next meeting is at Bartle, so you might want to check the agenda carefully.
Well, try to send out notice.
That's for the location.
We have to remind ourselves, too.
Yes.
So we don't show up at the wrong places. We've all done that, maybe once or twice, maybe three times for some of us. Okay, so with that, up for you guys, student representative report.
So first, we have Irving. Irving had their Spirit Week from September 17th to 21st. That was fun for the students, and they all had a great time. Back to School was September 20th, and Week of Respect was from October 1st to October 5th, so it just recently ended. As for Bartle School, there's a near record number of parents at Bartle's Back to School Night. Bartle has about 150 kids in a breakfast-after-the-bell program. Over 300 parents, guardians, relatives, friends, and students attended Bartle's bring-in ceremony to celebrate the beginning of the school year. And there's many awards for our great staff. Bartle's second grade teacher, Tracy Maden, received the 2018 Anton Benko Award for Excellence in Teaching Elementary Science. Bartle physical therapist, Leslie Marx, received the 2018 Distinguished Professional Award by the American Physical Therapy Association of New Jersey. And Bartle fifth grade teacher, Nicole Stahl, received a Donors Choose donation of T-shirts for a kindness project and initiative. The art and Spanish rooms have received upgrades to help student performance. The second annual bike rodeo, there's the Week of Respect, Illusion Maker Assembly, combining magic and science to explain how to treat the environment. There's also the Run for Fun Program, and Bartle held first two school-wide responsive epic community meetings of the school year, with the first two months focused on respect. And for interesting things that they're looking forward to, there's the Bartle Spirit Week, Bartle Walkers Trout the School Day, Bartle Fire Prevention Assembly, Bartle Ice Cream Social, Bartle School of Violence and Awareness Week Observance, and Bartle Scholastic Book Fair. As for the middle school, their Back to School Night was October 3rd, and Picture Day also fell on the same day.
For the, can everyone hear me okay? For the high school, it's been a great month. Spirit Week went well, participation was really high, I think it was 99% for the seniors participated overall. Homecoming was on the 27th, and it was a great success, thanks to all the students and teachers and staff who pitched in to clean up. Back to School Night was last Thursday, it went well. Progress reports come out tomorrow, and the PSAT is on Wednesday for all underclassmen.
Progress reports are ready.
How long do we have, sorry, sorry, how long do we have for our student board report? Okay, yeah, okay.
You won't catch me stopping you.
Okay, so one of our students had a very, sent us a very motivated response on this online form that we set up for them to talk about their questions, concerns, comments, anything like that. So the topic that the student was very interested in was about the school lunch. So he says that, well, he says that, yeah, we do have an agreement with Pomptonian food service, but what he said was that the school portions were, the lunch portions were definitely not enough, especially for athletes who had games later on in the day. He said that the food was disgusting, and he could not eat it, and he found green meat and hair often in his food.
Green meat?
Green meat, and he also.
Green meat?
Yeah. I've never seen it personally, but he's, oh, I asked him for it. Yeah, so he took a picture but then deleted it, sorry.
He Snapchat you a picture of green meat?
Yeah. So he just thinks that it's very bad for the student's health, and especially like the disgusting food combined with like small portions is very bad for students' health, and it's not letting the students get the food that they need.
The student also wrote a considerable amount, like a couple paragraphs, so we could find a way to share that with the board if we'd like.
Do you guys have any feedback on that? I don't know if you guys eat school lunch or bring lunch from home or go out for lunch.
So today, I actually forgot to bring my lunch to school, so I did get a school lunch. I got the hot lunch, which was like three tiny pieces of chicken and like four fries. And I really don't think that was enough for like the entire school day. I was super hungry when I got home, and then I just devoured a bunch of food right before the meeting. But yeah, so personally, I do also agree with the student. I think that school lunch should be improved if we could, and especially like the amount and like the quality of the food.
I think I share some similar ideas with Zayu. I don't often bring, I don't often buy school lunch, but I, the times that I do, sometimes the pizza is a bit undercooked. I haven't ever found green meat in my lunch. I don't, I don't think it's, I think the student might have been exaggerating a little bit, but I think there are some small improvements that we could make.
Okay. Thanks, guys. How do we follow up on that? I mean, I'd like, I'd be interested to know, sorry, like how they decide on the portion size? Is there like a national group, you know, like puts out standards and we adhere to them? I'd love to hear.
Yes, yeah, they have to adhere to certain standards set by the state Division of Child Nutrition, and the district is reviewed with an onsite review once every three years. They come and they look at all the menus for every day and the components of the menu, and so they have to approve what is being served in that respect.
What about, yeah, I suspected that was true. What about portion size? Is that?
Well, again, there is, you know, there are calorie restrictions as far as minimums and maximums, so.
But there's probably not a lot of day-to-day oversight.
Well, the food service manager has to give them either an entire month of menus and the composition of each of the items being served.
Right.
So it's a very thorough analysis that the state does, and they have a computer program that they put all the ingredients in and put it all together to make sure that it meets their requirements.
Sorry to intrude, but, so they can say that like they have very strict requirements and that they have like set up this for the students, but the fact is that they're not the ones eating this every day, they're not the ones having to like buy school lunch, they're not the ones experiencing this firsthand. And I just feel like they can come as an outside source and just come and regulate it or try to regulate it, and still it's not enough to their students, and it's not good for the students' health.
Would you guys, one of the things that we've had students do in the past is do kind of like a survey of students on particular topics, so this sounds like it might be a really interesting, a really interesting issue for you guys to survey the students in the high school and get a temperature, because, you know, as Avery said, you know, I mean, one student may exaggerate, another, but if you, you know, if you get more responses that are representative of, you know, a bunch of the students who actually ordered food from the cafeteria on a regular basis, we might find out some really interesting information. So if you guys would be interested in doing that, we'd be happy to take a look at that.
I personally would love to know if there's something we can do as far as Pomptonians offerings, because I know that, you know, it might be.
Michelle, you should probably get a little closer to your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. It might be an issue of preparation, but it might not, and I would just like to be clear about what is available. Because I know that I volunteered in the high school kitchen when we did the spaghetti dinner a few years ago. Dave was there, Dr. Sussman.
Remember?
Their equipment is really beautiful. I mean, we have invested quite a bit of money, and it's really beautiful kitchen equipment. And one of the ladies who worked there said, oh, we never use that, I don't even know how to use that. And it was, it was a boiling mechanism so that restaurants can make pasta in large amounts. This is something that we spent a lot of money on, I assume, because not everyone has that. I've worked in other restaurants before. And, you know, I think that the message from this staff member was that everything is fried. It's easier that way, it's just fried. So it sounds to me like Zayu would agree with his lunch, it was fried, and the pizza being undercooked might be undercooked because it's not fried, I don't know. I would just like to know more about what happens in the cafeteria, and I know that food has been an issue for my kids as far as buying lunch. It's, it's always been something they're not looking forward to rather than looking forward to, so I'd like to hear about.
It's something I would absolutely love to dive in headfirst, it's just, I think, one of those things that always ends up very much at the end of the list.
Unfortunately.
Because there are so many pressing issues to always be addressing that that one never quite rises to the top, but.
If our student reps are industrious and willing to take that task on, that would be great.
Gathering information, right. I mean, the portion size thing, if this really is an issue, that seems like something that can be handled with a degree of ease. The quality of the food issue, that's a harder problem.
But to that point, though, about the quality of food and like frying, aren't there also guidelines about like a certain amount or portions of food that can be fried? Or, you know, I'm sure there is some sort of standard.
I don't think they deep fry anything. The food might be fried before they receive it, but they put it in an oven, like chicken tenders, for example.
Right.
It might have been fried, deep fried before they got it, and then it was frozen, and then they have to cook it, but, no, they bake most everything, even french fries.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know what she had meant by that. I assumed that it was just reheated, because there's no, she didn't know about the equipment and how to use it, so.
I can only speak to specifics.
Right.
Anecdotes go, are helpful.
Yeah.
They'll go a certain distance, but without specifics, I mean, this particular person might not have been experienced with equipment, but maybe other, the rest of the staff were.
Right.
Right. I think it would be really interesting if the students are willing to put, you know, a survey together and ask some questions of the high school student body, and then we can see what we can get back, and then, I mean, you know, Dr. Taylor's in and out of the buildings, you can go walk through the cafeteria and see if, you know, there's some, you know, 200-pound football player sitting there with two chicken tenders, you know, then it's not, not exaggeration, you know, and that's not going to be enough for, you know, a growing boy, an active growing boy to like eat at lunch.
If I can encourage you to ask for specifics whenever possible, that would help a lot.
Yeah, we can pretty easily set up a Google form, and I think students would definitely, it's a topic that there are a lot of students.
Absolutely, I'm sure you, I'm sure we'll get some very interesting information back.
For what it's worth, I had lunch in the middle school cafeteria last April, and I thought it was good. I had tacos, my portion was, maybe it's a, might be a middle school, high school thing too, by the way, because I, I mean, maybe they were loading it the tray for my sake.
Yeah, I think there might be a tiny bit of bias, because I got lunch with two of my female friends, and they're like smaller than me and like definitely not as fat as I am, but, so.
No self-deprecation at the board table.
So I got like, like basically twice the number of chicken tenders, two of them were like the same size as theirs, and then like two of them were like tiny, but like you could see that it was like rather a distinct difference between the, our sizes. And especially, so I did ask specifically for veggies, but most students don't, and the default is just not to give vegetables. I guess it like prevents waste, but it also, like, if we did have vegetables that like students were willing to eat, then that would also help increase like student health, especially since like the only thing that they got were chicken tenders and french fries, and those tend not to be the healthiest things.
So which are the vegetables that the kids, do you think, would like to eat? Which ones?
That could be something for your survey.
That might be, that might be a question. Broccoli, do you think?
There was broccoli available, but.
Brussels sprouts?
Maybe, maybe raw stuff, I mean, maybe they eat carrots and celery or something, you know.
I think there's a salad bar and stuff, so we'll, we'll, okay, yeah, yeah. We'll dive into this a little, a little deeper after you guys come back with some information for us.
Wonderful.
So we will move on, unless, anybody, do you guys have anything else? Nope, that was it? Okay, so we will move on to Dr. Taylor's report.
I'd like to, again, share with the board, although there were some who weren't here last month, and the student reps didn't see this data, the data put together, discipline incidences from 2017, 18, month by month, and then I'd like to go a step further and share my takeaways after I looked at the data, and show you a couple of videos that reflect the work we're doing around restorative practices. Student reps, I told the board that Ms. Luxa, who is the Dean of Restorative Practices, I hope you're aware of that, will be coming to a November meeting to talk about her work, and Mr. Harrison will also be there as well, so we'll have a chance to hear personally from Ms. Luxa. I'm going to throw two slides up, well, four, but two in particular up on the screen that I'd like you to take a look at again, or for those of you who haven't seen it yet for the first time. You're looking at a monthly report of incidences broken down by demographic, including those who are special ed students, so keep in mind that the special ed numbers might wrap in other students who are black, Hispanic, white, Asian, multiracial. The different colored lines obviously represent the different demographic group. I'm going to move on. This is just district in-school suspension data. Ms. Coleman?
Just to point out that these things need to be altered, right, on black, people of color.
Yeah, sure, so the blue line represents black students.
I'm hoping to point out.
Oh, sure, who are in-school suspended. So the blue line. There are two blue lines, I think, is Monique's point, it's difficult to tell which is which. I can't use my expensive TED Talk certified pointer. So the blue line represents black students. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a second blue line, the second blue line at the bottom represents students who are classified as multiracial or identified as multiracial. This could be students who have different parents of different ethnic backgrounds, different racial backgrounds. The orange line represents students who are Hispanic. The white line represents students who are white. The yellow, students who are represented in the Asian population. And then the green line represents special education students. And these are just students who are in-school suspended. I'm going to show you a slide that reflects our out-of-school suspension rates. Black students, Hispanic students, white students. We didn't report any incidences until January, which is why you don't see an uptick here until here. Asian students, and our special education population. I think what will be even more telling is when I share with the board on a monthly basis, 17, 18, and 2018, 2019 comparative data, what we would obviously like to see is one of two things, either parity, lines that are closer to each other among the different subgroups of students, or, and/or, a general regression in the frequency over time. So far, our numbers for September are up since they were last year, since last year's numbers. Last year in September, we had two students who were either in-school suspended or out-of-school suspended. This September, we had five students spread over six incidences, reflect our in-school suspension data, our out-of-school suspension data. This is our in-school suspension comparison between 2017, 18, and 2018, 2019, so we had additional incident at the high school, two at the middle school, those students who were suspended in school.
Wait, Scott, I think the numbers that you're saying and the numbers that are on there are different. You're saying five, but there's.
I think you just combined.
Oh, you're combining the two.
Correct.
That's two years.
Yeah.
No, 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 the green is 2018, so two, two at the middle school, two, three at the high school.
Oh, oh, I see.
So we had two more incidences at the middle school than this September than we did last September. Not necessarily students who were suspended in school, incidences that led to suspensions. We had a frequency of two, and as you can see at the high school, we had two last September, three this September. This is just in-school suspension data, and we had one student suspended out of school district-wide this September. We didn't have any students who were suspended out of school this time last September. Now, I get that it's early, and so we don't have a very big sample group with which we're working. I think as time goes on, as we progress month by month, we'll see a more of a pattern with which to analyze. I mean, my, my two takeaways, and I mentioned this to the board, closed session last month, when looking at this data, is one, obviously, when you look at the, at the lines, our minority in special education students are still being suspended at higher rates than their white, Asian peers, and our in-school suspension rate seemed to be more steady as opposed to our out-of-school suspension rate. So for instance, there's a, there's a definite trend, and of course, you can see the peak months. One thing we're going to try hard to do this year as a leadership team, including our Dean of Restorative Practices and our Youth Safety Specialist, Mr. Harrison, is hone in on those months that we can see are most troublesome, May, February, March, similar to what, I mean, I, the first example I can think of is the approach that some police departments in big cities took to hone in on particular hotspots by community, by location, not so much by time of the year, and then would put their resources heavily into those hotspot communities. For us, it might mean putting our resources more heavily into certain hotspot months. Our out-of-school suspension data somewhat reflects a similar peak periods, you know, the February, March, dead of winter period, and then towards the end of the year, May to June. But, but notice the trend here in our in-school suspension data. It's, it's more stable as opposed to our out-of-school suspension data. I mean, this, this tells me a couple of things, and we could all interpret this differently, but I'm seeing, we seem to be relying more heavily on in-school suspension as a, as a response to violations of our Code of Conduct, at least last year we did, whereas out-of-school suspension is applied somewhat randomly. Could be we do it because out-of-school suspension is reserved for only the worst-case discipline scenarios, and those, there's not necessarily a consistent pattern of those worst-case scenarios. Or, could be, if you want to look at this with the glass half-empty, in-school suspension is our go-to response, or was our go-to response. Now, this year, of course, we have a new Code of Conduct in place, and only those incidences that occur, which that warrant level three or level four responses, which are two highest levels of Code of Conduct violation response, would compel us to suspend somebody in school or out of school. Level one and two, we don't touch suspension. So perhaps some of this, so some of these incidences, some of these students related to these incidents would be treated differently with our new Code of Conduct. October 30th, we have a, another discipline study group meeting, the first of this year, and it's at that meeting that we're going to reflect on how things have been going the last couple of months, gaps that we have identified. I've expanded the numbers who serve on the committee, there'll be a representative from Highland Park Parents of Students of Color, and we'll also engage our Youth Safety Specialist, Mr. Harrison, and Ms. Luxa, our Dean of Restorative Practices. One other chart I'd like, one last data chart I'd like to share with you is a breakout of our suspension rates, both district, both in-school and out-of-school, by demographic as compared to last September. Any other questions about the data before I move on? Sure.
Monique, can you, can you grab your mic to?
I was asking you to go back to the last slide. You can pull it out of there. Okay.
I mean, we're still seeing a high frequency of special education students, comparatively speaking. I mean, we're talking about two incidences, but comparatively speaking, like we did last year. You look at, go back to that other chart that shows our in-school suspension data, you see our, our green line is up there, those are our special ed students. That's just for in-school suspension data, but even with our out-of-school suspension data, special education students show up very high on the frequency list, and we're already seeing a pattern there in September as compared to last year's numbers. And we're already seeing a pattern there in September as compared to last year's numbers.
I was wondering how the numbers for black and Hispanic students correlate to the special ed students. I'm sure that...
So that's a great question. I thought about getting that data together, but I thought about it too late for this meeting, but it's something I'm going to do. I'd like to know where the overlaps are. You know, yeah, how many of these, how many of the special education students are black and Hispanic students in particular? And if I'd broken out low socio-economic categorized students, perhaps, that, you know, I could throw that in there. That's, and that's something which I could potentially add, so slowly I'll build on this data, but I definitely, I thought that too. I think it was over the weekend that I came up with that thought, and that's data I need other people to help me pull, but I'll get to that.
Hey, Scott. One other thing that struck me looking at this the other day, and other graphics similar to this, was that in terms of just raw numbers, it didn't really give me a lot to be able to look at without knowing what percentage of, say, Hispanics made in the overall school population. You know, like if you're looking at, if you're looking at white compared to Asian, but knowing that white students make up a larger portion of the school than Asian students do, you know, so trying to do a comparative analysis based on, you know, like where you have like multi, you know, relatively low, but they also make up a larger percentage of the school population.
Yeah, one thing I could do, that's a great point, and I thought that of that too, and I, but then I realized that the baseline data I collected from last year only shows incidences, not percentages of students, but I, but that's also something that I can go back to if I have more time and look at. So perhaps by the next closed session meeting, when I talk about discipline, I can present that as well.
Yeah. I think this is what we asked you for, and, you know, in many respects, but then after I saw it, I was second-guessing myself and saying, all right, now I need more.
Well, I think this is also kind of going to be a work in progress, right? I mean, like, a lot of the stuff that we've been asking Scott for over the years, like our discipline reports continue to expand to include additional information that gives us a bigger picture. I think the really important takeaway here is that we're starting to do it, you know, and that now we'll actually be able to look at one year to the next and start to compare that, and we can do this year after year so that we have multiple years of data, and we can keep adding to it so we get a clearer and clearer picture. I mean, right now, it's, you know, a bunch of squiggly lines on a piece of paper, and it's not terribly helpful, but we're building towards a database of information that's going to be transparent, and hopefully eventually we'll paint a picture. It doesn't paint a very clear picture now, but the goal is for that to happen. We're starting to see that with the discipline reports, like now we can look at it in closed session and say, hey, we saw this kid at the end of last year, and, you know, we don't know who that kid is exactly, but we have this number, and we can look at the behaviors, and we can say, hey, it's really easy to see that this kid has got some stuff going on. So hopefully, we'll be able to see those kind of similar patterns here over time.
I do think it would be, oh, I'm sorry. Do you mind? I do agree with Rob that, oh, this is wonderful. Thank you. This is great to see. I'm very excited about it. I do think that over time, it would be helpful to have the rates instead of the raw numbers. You know, I mean, the rates would obviously make this look much worse. On the other hand, some of that might be unfair because we have very small numbers, but you know, to say that, you know, the...
Meaning like it was X percentage of the black population that was, had an in- or out-of-school suspension, or Y percentage of the special ed population?
Right, because those peaks would be like way crazier if we were doing percentages.
Right.
And again, we do have small numbers, but it's a consistent pattern. It'd be great to have that information, especially across years as our numbers change.
Also, do our administrators sit down and go through the data and discuss the...
They are the ones who generated the data for me. I just put it in charts.
But do they get together as a team and talk about the data?
No, we have not been doing that. Something to consider.
I think that that would be...
Yeah, it might give people, it might just share one of the reasons that we're motivated to talk about this all the time. I'm sure there's sometimes a feeling that we're always going on and on and on about this, and, you know, this is one of the reasons why.
I mean, I've taken responsibility for directing the principals and the assistant principals to do certain things after I've analyzed the data, but just like looking at student academic achievement data, I could be empowering the leadership team on a greater basis.
Absolutely.
If they are vested in the analysis as I am, so it's something I'll consider.
And it would help also, like we're always talking about, making sure that we, you know, are from grade to grade and school to school, trying to be on the same page when it comes to things and have the same language, especially when we're talking about restorative practices. So for them to meet and discuss discipline and delve into the data, you know, on a monthly basis, I think is pretty crucial.
That's something we can incorporate to our leadership team meetings. We meet twice a month, and perhaps one of those months could be dedicated to that. It's a good transition from restorative practices into a couple of clips I want to show you. Two, three-minute clips. I am not prepared to show the board, student representatives, and the community footage of the circles we conduct yet for a variety of reasons. We're in year two of a three-year implementation plan for restorative practice work at the middle and high school, but I did find a couple of reputable videos that reflect the two types of circle talks that we've been facilitating. So the first circle talk I'd like to have you see and hear about is what we refer to as a community-building circle. So this is some of the work that our teachers are doing in their classes when they want to build community around conversations.
... So, I want to take you guys forward. We just did this training, we did a version of this. Before we started, we're going to go in the talking piece. And with the circle work, we're waiting in the talking piece. And it's a very professional talking piece. It's the only person at the top. So I'm going to be asking a question, a pass in to make that, and that person will talk in the piece that will... There's also some agreements. They're kind of like rules. You know, the one is just like a talking piece. Speak from the heart, you know, say your truth. Listen from the heart, so you're not judging, right? And they say, speak in a simple respect, be very respectful to everybody. You sort of know what they're saying. Be more confidential, so somebody can tell you what they're talking about, whatever you're talking about. It's true, the circle, this type of side. Based on what I've talked about. Okay? And if you have anything else you've got to give them? All right. So when we're going to do an introduction, I want you to say your name, and if you have trouble anywhere in the world, we'll go. Okay? So I need Mr. Morale.
I'm going to move forward. I want to show you another example, circle talk. This is what we refer to in our district as a reactive circle, which you're about to see. So the previous example is of a meeting that might take between 20 and 30 minutes. It's either facilitated by a teacher at the beginning of a class, or by Ms. Luxa. Ms. Luxa, our Dean of Restorative Practices at the middle and high school, is actually running weekly group community-building circles, similar to what our guidance counselors at Irving and Bartle do during lunch for the students, what we refer to as a lunch bunches. This type of circle, reactive circle, is facilitated when a student does harm to his or her peers, adults, to the community. It's something we would offer to students upon re-entry from being suspended out of school. It is voluntary, but almost all the time, our students participate, or at least are willing to participate in these, in these particular circles.
... And I'm like, sweetie, this is so proud of this. My mom, my dad, they're... They, they were telling me to do it, but they also... I'm excited about how we're going to push transition from there to here again. But I don't care about the fear. I know what it feels like. Things come and go, but I don't know this. This is different. The problem is, I feel, that's the one concern, is because I have trust in you, so I should trust my passion, and we have all the best in here. So then, I quote, "Selfishness is the definition of... Never let them turn on you." So now, we can talk, we can talk, we can start, but if there's anybody else who wishes this, this is... We make the most of what we want to do. This kid went through a lot of significant things that I wouldn't have known. And if not me, nothing is like him. It allows us to live with that, so everybody has to answer those questions.
I was a kid, I was wondering if kids had some... When I was young, I remember, I'm making a little one to you.
Yeah, so, yeah. Do you know, once you've been a bridge?
I really wanted to be a senior, I really wanted to be a... I think I'm in the process of doing that now. I'll work with you.
And when this is set, we're all missing the work, and we're missing the... And that's, we want to know that, all three of you stay.
I'm going to move forward. I've been sharing with the board snippets of feedback we're getting from students about our efforts to incorporate restorative practices. You haven't seen these yet, but these are some surveys that, and I might have to read them, because Ms. Smith might not be able to see from back there what it says, but Ms. Luxa has been giving the kids surveys after they take part in some of these circles. The survey, first question was, what was your experience from today's conversation? And the student responded, my experience from today's conversation was that this was a good experience. I know now, we got, we got to sit down and talk about our opinion and our, and other things. The second question reads, on a scale from one to five, how helpful was this conversation in helping you work with others? Student writes, this conversation was serious, and it did help me work with others. The last question, what would you like to see come from the circle in the future? Student writes, I would like that, and refers to another student, and I would be able to keep a good friendship and continue being respectful to each other. And in the additional comment section, the student writes, thank you very much, Ms. Luxa. I think this was very helpful. One other survey, student writes, my experience was great. I was sad, but now I'm happy. These are all middle schoolers, by the way. In answering to the second question, student said, on a scale of one to five, this was five. Most helpful because I felt bad, but that conversation made me feel honest. And then the answer to the last question was that nothing bad happens anymore when being asked what the student would like to see come from the circle in the future. So we are getting positive feedback. I mentioned the whole group community-building sessions that Ms. Luxa is running as an example of one. She's got 24 kids in this particular group. The theme is friendship, and this is some of the things that they, that they talk about. Ms. Mittletater is our eighth grade, ninth grade guidance counselor. I left on the board table, and there are stacks of this McManus Smith of these articles for the community. Two articles that Dr. Ann Gregory shared with me. I reached out to Ann over the summer to get an update on how her work was going, and I also wanted to get the latest research she's collected and analyzed on the effectiveness of restorative practices in reducing the discipline equity gap, and she provided me these two pieces, which were written in just the last year. If you don't read them cover to cover, I recommend you at least read the abstract and the findings slash conclusion on the last few pages. The bottom line in both articles is that it is not just one thing that's going to help us reduce the discipline equity gap. In fact, in one of the articles, Ann and her co-authors point to restorative practices in isolation not having any impact, positive or negative, of reducing the discipline equity gap. It's when coupled with some of the things that we're doing, like focusing on being more culturally responsive, incorporating social-emotional skill building from K-12, combined with restorative practices, that did, in the other article, she points out, reduce that discipline equity gap. So I think we need to follow the process and make this a comprehensive effort, not just a singular magic bullet, we'll fix all approach. I will collect additional data per our discussion and come back to the board with that additional material next closed session, but that wraps up my review for now. Any other questions?
I had two questions. One was about the former slides that you had up, but I wanted to know how much Genesis could help us in getting this data, you know, to as many people, you know, on the board as possible. Like, we were talking about AP and honors courses in curriculum committee a few weeks ago, and I was just wondering if, you know, we could get data about who's in those courses, because we had heard for years that there was a disparity. And so Mr. Lester kindly reported that information to us through Dr. Taylor, but I was wondering if there was some way that we could, like, harness the power of Genesis to help us collect that data a little bit more efficiently without so much bother to the administrators, and so it could be easier for us to see, you know, how are we doing, how, without like a formal ask and a formal presentation, if Genesis could be a way for us to...
We have a support ticket to Genesis to have them create a custom report for us so we can just press a button, a few buttons, and we can pull that data. We'll do it manually until we get the response from Genesis, but Dr. Nicos should put a request in for that.
So yeah, both for, I would think, you know, for discipline issues, like we saw on the other slides, and also for things like AP and honors demographic information, that would be super helpful. And then the next thing I wanted to ask was about the restorative circles, and now I've... Oh, that's what it was. The article that you gave to us, and I got copies, are the faculty also given copies so they understand what our goals are?
The community building?
For community building.
Circles, yes, but by choice, not, we're not, we're directing them to incorporate them. As was the case last year, there seems to be more of that happening at the middle school among our teachers than at the high school. And I have some, just general assumptions as to why that might be. First of all, I think high school teachers, we haven't been one of them, high school English teacher, feel we're pressured to get to the content than they may do at the middle school for a variety of reasons. And I also think that, remember, the fire started in middle school, and it's spreading to the high school. So, you know, year three, if you look at our three-year implementation plan, has us come into some agreement with faculty to make this a more regular process, similar to what we did down at Irving and Bartle when we moved everybody in the direction of incorporating responsive classroom and morning meetings in all their classes. We're still trying to get the buy-in. We want to do it from the inside out, not top down.
Yeah, I just always remember those three students that came to our community meeting about safety and restorative practices, and, you know, their advice from the inside of school to us on the outside was, you need to work on the teachers not being so racially biased. I mean, that was the raw, like, almost repetitive message that I remember hearing, and it sticks with me. So I know that the teachers want to do the right thing, and I just don't know how much buy-in there is. I can't get a good gauge on it from where we are, so...
Well, look, you know, one of the challenges at the high school we ran into, and we were public about this, I think we came up with the board meetings last year, is that we didn't do a good enough job, starting with me directing others to balance accountability with the restorative practices approach. There was a lot of confusion last year. Are we, are we sticking with the old Code of Conduct, or aren't we? Do we suspend students, or don't we? I mean, and I gave mixed signals to my principals when it came to that, so that didn't help. And, you know, when Darcy and I sat with some of the high school teachers who were involved in a really difficult situation, we sensed a lot of anxiety, this is last year, trepidation and security. This year, we met with the same teachers to follow up about how things were going, and we felt, I was putting words in your mouth, but we felt like there was a lot more comfort there, ease. I've had a few teachers, substitute, a regular substitute, come up to me and say, wow, Dr. Taylor, things seem so quiet. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, you know, quiet this year. I think we're stabilizing some of the problems that we ran into last year, so I'm hoping that's gives us fertile ground to encourage teachers to take more of a leap at the high school level. at the high school level going forward.
So I have a question about the restorative practices. So has there ever been any follow-up on any of the problems or the students that came to the circles? Because in my opinion, I don't think a conversation will completely change a relationship between like two people and wouldn't be able to fully solve a problem. And especially considering, if it were me and I were given a survey at the end, I would probably just rate it well in order to get it over with and just get out of it as quickly as possible. I was wondering if there's any follow-up.
That's a great question, Zio. So in the report I shared with the board closed session...
We'll keep that in mind if we give Zio any surveys.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, we'll keep that in mind if we give Zio any surveys, then he's just going to...
In the report I shared with the board closed session, I provide a lot of narrative about supports we've provided to students who were either suspended in school or out of school. And in a number of cases, the dean of restorative practices was the one who pointed out, and I reflected in the report, that she followed up to see how things were going. And all but, I think, one of the three or four cases in which the discipline problem involved a fight between two students, students said they were getting along better. So there is follow-up. I can't guarantee that it's happening across the board, but at least in some of the incidences that I read and reviewed, that follow-up is happening at the upper grades, thanks to Ms. Luxa.
Well, and the important thing too is that now we have multiple people who are involved in many of these incidences. If there's a big incident between students, we now have not just the principal who's involved, but we've got an assistant principal who's involved and a dean of restorative practices who are involved. Those assistant principals are both in their buildings now full-time, so they know that they can be checking in with those students on a regular basis. So it's not just a like, oh, we had that circle, we're done with you guys. They can constantly be checking in on students. You know, I mean, they're very aware that relationships are dynamic, ongoing things, and you know, one meeting isn't going to solve that. And I think part of their training for restorative practices is those continual check-ins with those students who, you know, they know are having issues.
So I think to that, I want to just add on to that conversation a little bit about restorative practices and how we're now going to evaluate where we are in the process and how effective we are at...
That's a great question. So Maurice Elias has given me two of his interns, five hours a week. But we're meeting, I'm meeting with Ms. Luxa, Ms. Maiden, who's the coordinator of the Bartle Social Emotional Decision Making Lab, Ms. McNally, since she's responsible for responsive classroom at Irving. That's it. On Monday is coming up. So we can talk about these interns putting together research tools. They're doctoral interns too, so this is their work. Research tools to collect data, both qualitative and quantitative, on all three measures that we put in place. So I don't know what that's going to look like. Could be surveys, could be focus groups, but I'm going to put them to work for free. It's a service learning opportunity for them.
No, that's great. And I just had a couple more questions. To Michelle's point about Genesis and how it's being used, it made me think about, this is discipline reporting more generally, the discussion we had at the prior board meeting about some concerns with discipline reporting at Bartle in particular. Do we now know that all incidents are being reported in Genesis?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. And then parents have access to that, and parents know they have access to that now in the Genesis...
We're undecided on that. We have a discussion coming up on the 16th as a team to review that. Right now, the default has been parents have access to it. I mean, parents have access to it if they want it. Anybody can come to the principal's office and say, hey, I'd like to see my student's child's discipline report. Question is whether we are ready to provide access on the parent portal so that when you look at your child's schedule, you can click a tab, you can look at this, you can look at that.
So at this point, it's not available?
At this point, it's not.
So if a parent wants to...
On that level.
Right, on that level. So if a parent wants to find out their child's discipline records, they have to actually come in and ask for that?
Absolutely. Hey, I'd like to know what my child's incident report looks like. Can you show it to me? Sure, come on in, pull it up, send it.
I'm just curious to know, now that you're saying that, why there would be some hesitation to make that information readily available?
There might be some confidential information listed, other students' names, the teacher's name. That's just one rationale. I haven't collected, I haven't gotten the input from the principals yet.
So I just logged into my kids. And I mean, the discipline tab is there, so...
It's misleading at this point. It looks like...
Yeah, I mean, there is a discipline tab. I can click on it.
I was able to just get that data last year. I don't know, I mean, we haven't had discipline incidents yet.
The default is always we check, Genesis default has it broadcast to you guys, and you're saying that you're seeing it, so...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the discipline tab is there.
But it just says, and it says, your child has had zero incidents, which I guess may or may not be true depending on...
I don't know if that's a consistent practice in all the schools, so...
That's high school.
Discussion agenda.
Middle school, that's how it works.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Don't rush it.
So that should be changed, right? To reflect that, this does not reflect, to get your child's actual discipline report, you need to call the district until, when and if we decide to make this publicly available?
Could you get back to us? Could you check with the principals and see what schools it is available? Because I mean, I can't see anything.
They called that on inconsistency, so I have to look into that.
And if it's not an inconsistency, if it's just that none of them are giving the data publicly and the tabs say your child has no incidents, then the tab needs to be changed to reflect the reality, right? So parents aren't surprised when there is a discipline incident that for some reason they haven't heard about.
Yeah, that's...
That's kind of wacky. I mean, my tendency would be to agree with Monique that this stuff should be available, at least in some kind of modified format so that the parent knows that something happened.
Yeah, I would want to know.
Yeah, it doesn't have to say like Johnny hit this child and that child, but you know, there was an incident involving a fight or whatever.
I mean, just as we know, you know, all of our students' sort of academic data through Genesis, that's the idea.
Understood, sure.
I just think that that's also very important.
Well, again, the only difference is, we provide a lot more detailed information about all kinds of students. We use different data when we make up these behavior incidents reports that some principals may be concerned about sharing.
Yeah, but I mean, and that's him, maybe just modifying it so that, again, obviously confidential...
That's one possible solution.
It could be like two, you know, one sentence. Discipline report related to a fight, call the school for more information, you know, something like that.
I think I need to start by making sure I know which schools have it broadcast and which don't.
Or, I mean, like you said, the tab might just be there, but it's not populating anything.
Not active, yeah.
I don't know.
But it's making an assertion.
It would be good to know.
It's telling us affirmatively, yeah, that...
You know, and it's got weird words like total demerits, you know? Demerits.
Oh, God, that brings back terrible memories of Catholic school!
Also, really quick, I know you'd mentioned, and there's going to be a discipline study group meeting at the end of October, but one of the things I think we're going to look at is sort of the gray areas with discipline code violations and when a particular code violation actually leads to an in-school suspension. And I think one of the gray areas that you didn't point out, but I kind of thought about as you were talking, is that if there's a level one, as far as I understand, the way the discipline code is now written, a level one or two code violation, which currently does not qualify for in-school suspension or out-school. But if there is a repeated sort of pattern of that particular violation, then it could actually...
Well, that's how, that's what we need to flesh out. Because that's not clarified. And this is a living document, now that we've actually crossed that bridge this September with such a case, we need to flesh it out. Yeah, so I'm not going to say what it'll be, but as a group, with all the stakeholders around the table, we'll figure out what the best solution is.
Because, you know, again, to me, and we'll talk about that in the group, but that's where, again, situations that probably could be dealt with or we could analyze a little bit more deeper to see if there are things such as biases that are underlying certain interactions between a teacher and a student, if those could be kind of addressed before the behavior escalates to the point where a student is being suspended and clearly that's something we want to strive for. And I know that takes more resources and, you know, digging kind of deep qualitatively in incidents, but those, just getting information on the interactions and how there could be some biases there.
I was just thinking about something that Dr. Gregory and I have talked about, and that is the balance needed between accountability measures, more punitive approaches to discipline, and support. Be a real coup if I can get Dr. Gregory to come up to that October 30 meeting. So she's watching this video right now. Be on the lookout.
It won't be the last meeting either, so... Did you have something else? Oh, no, Rob, move forward.
Well, I mean, the more I think about this, the more uncomfortable I am to think about discipline information being electronically captured, possibly in different ways, in different schools, written up differently, and being captured and digitally stored about children. And I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that at all. I'd rather see those reports be on paper, in the file. Maybe that's old-fashioned.
You make a good point. A separate point from whether parents should be notified. I mean, that has to happen...
Totally separate point.
That was my point, that as a parent, I want to know, my child's been involved in some sort of discipline incident, you know?
I totally, totally agree with that.
And I don't have to go into acts to find that out. I should be able to know that that's, something's happened, right?
And I think we had discussion about this, that from year to year, that information goes away.
Well, it's stored. Principals can review it, but teachers can't.
Right. I mean, that might be, would you prefer a system where they were sort of self-destructing at the end of a year? Or we can't just...
Something to think about.
I was just wondering, was Rob's concern like the longevity of the information or the fact that it's online and can be hacked?
Yeah, because, well, the fact that if it is digitally stored, and if you tell me that it's going to actually go away at the end of a period of time, I don't necessarily trust that.
And it's not going to go away? I mean, that's what we're, I mean, no, it's going to be archived in digital form. So why did you like paper copies? Was it because they can be destroyed or is it because they can't be leaked?
Yeah, both.
Both things, okay. That's, I was just wondering what that...
That's just...
Yeah, any kind of digital footprint on a kid is unnerving, for sure. I think that's why we decided on Genesis, though, right? Than it having been in the hands of Pearson. But, you know, but it's still...
I think I could certainly feel you on that completely. I think that was why I was so excited to get rid of Pearson from keeping digital records because Pearson is an international company and they have sold private information before, so...
And I would expect that far less from Genesis.
Ms. Luxa will be here in November, and we'll be able to pick her up as well.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Thank you. So we will move on to our committee reports, which are all relatively late. And I would just caution us all to remember that we do want to get to our board rolls tonight, so we don't want to, if at all avoidable, we don't want to go down any rabbit holes. All right, all right.
Discipline, folks, self-discipline.
So Michelle, could you go over the curriculum and instruction?
Yes, I can do it quickly. So this time around, we have our committee report, which is basically that we did not meet in person, but that we just emailed back and forth, which was nice. Number two is our resolution for field trip requests as per attached. Number three is the resolution to establish a partnership between the Highland Park Public Schools and the Bog Center and person-centered approaches in schools and transitions. So PCAST is how they have the acronym here. That's for person-centered approaches in schools and transition. And basically what it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's something that Ruth brought to our attention to help facilitate us, is it special needs students, social growth? Is that right?
So I have to apologize, I have an information file that I'm going to put in the board folder, which I should have done ahead of this meeting. First of all, I have to thank Ruth for getting us going. You were the one who alerted us to the Bog Center work while it's just caught fire. The intent of a PCAST session is to prepare the student and the family for the IEP process. So that going into the IEP, all the stakeholders know the student's strengths, needs, challenges, hopes for the future, and that all plays into the programming for the student.
Okay. I was confused about the social aspect of the IEP meeting in the descriptions.
When Scott and I met to put together the agenda, he showed me some of this information. And it was like, I mean, just like absolutely heartwarming, you know, like these kids who are going into their IEP meetings writing down like what their goals are and what their...
The plan.
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, some of them were just like, you know, when I want to receive affection for me to be able to be in charge of that kind of thing, and you're just like melt into a great big puddle. But, you know, so the kids can say, here's what I think I need to work on, here's what my goals are. So it's not just, you know, an IEP is just something that's happening to a kid. It's something that a kid gets some sort of buy-in to, which is just...
I have to be honest, I didn't know enough about it. I didn't even bother to ask because when he said that it came from Ruth, I was like, okay. I really, I mean, honestly, I know that I've heard her speak about the Bog Center before, but I apologize for not being as educated as she is.
Well, and the person who's doing the interacting between us and the Bog Center is just like another just phenomenal human being.
That's so good.
Just great.
You can always improve that IEP procedure.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay, so number four is a resolution to approve the environmental, earth, and sustainability curriculum guide as per the attached. Number five is a resolution to approve the following university graduate students for teaching internships and junior practicum. And there's three of them there, all in Bartle with Ms. Tracy Maiden. And that concludes my report.
Land speed record. Does anybody have any questions for Michelle on any of the curriculum items? My goodness, all right. Well, Mr. Krieger is somewhere enjoying European travels, so Mr. Magdiner has very graciously agreed to let me off the hook, and he will give the finance and facilities report, so I don't have to.
Thank you, yes. And I would much rather be here with you all than wherever it is that Mark is. We're in Europe, eating food and maybe having a glass of wine.
Chicken tenders and french fries?
Anyway.
No doubt.
Okay, so the finance and facilities committee did meet this evening, with Mark's travels So I'll go through the items on the agenda and then just describe a couple of other things that we did talk about. Number two is our standard bill lists, and there is one correction to the bill lists. That's the cafeteria bill list, which should read through September 28th, and this will be corrected for next week's final agenda that we'll be actually voting on. But that goes through the 28th instead of what it says the 21st, and the dollar amount there should read $48,984.98. Number three is our travel, these are standard expense sheets, the travel and related expense reimbursement report. Number four through seven are other standard travel reports. These are for the board members who are going to be traveling to the NJ SBA workshop later this month. Number eight is professional services, and this is through the educational services That's an assistive technology support and training related to special needs students. Item number nine, this was previously approved, the job actually, I believe, has already taken place. This is concrete replacement at the middle school, and this is on top of some concrete work that had been done elsewhere in the borough and was discovered during the actual work. The second quote was acquired, which turned out to be more costly since probably due to the fact that the contractor was already on site, and so the contractor completed the work. That is item number nine, and that was basically adjusting from $87.70 to $12,289 for that concrete work. Number 10 and 11, quotes received and contracts issued to purchase rooftop air conditioning unit for the middle school cafeteria, and this was installed last month, just prior to our meeting. Am I correct? Yeah, that is actually working.
So what happened with the air conditioning? Did it need to be replaced or was there a different sort of a system?
That's replacing what we had.
The existing rooftop unit needed to be replaced.
Right. So that has been completed. And then items 12 and 13, will be tabled, actually. Those appear on the agenda tonight, but will not appear next week, am I correct, Linda? We'll be doing those next month.
That's correct. Okay, does anybody have any questions for...
I just wanted to add, the other items basically are ongoing reviews. These are reported on out-of-district special ed placements, unforeseen revenues and expenses for the school year, which we track on a monthly basis. At this point, we're running slightly, actually, ahead, ahead meaning in a good way. Ahead meaning in a good way. But that... Those fluctuate up and down during the course of the school year. We look at the enrollment reports each month with the spreadsheet showing where we are. At this point, a decrease of 17 students from the previous month, an increase of 16 students compared with the same spot last year at this time. So, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at and keeping on top of each month.
Awesome.
So, I was... Question? Yeah, so I was wondering about the cafeteria bill list for Pomponian Food Service. Why for the period ending in September 21st, 2018, was $23,000 compared to the rest, which are about $7,000 to $10,000?
Sorry, say that again?
So, for the cafeteria bill list, the invoice amount for the expenses period ending September 21st, 2018, was $23,000 compared to the usual for the other ones, which were like $7,000 to $10,000? Like, does Pomponian, like, just send us an invoice, or do they, like, break down everything that they bill us for?
They give a detailed breakdown. Such... No, you don't necessarily have that. But this one included the monthly payroll, which is most of them just include purchases, supplies. So, that's the reason.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the air conditioning. I was going to bring that during new business, but I have since got an email just asking. It's been incredibly hot.
Now that summer lasts until October.
Right, so I am sure that we have staff who are wondering, when are we getting our air conditioning? There are multiple classrooms that are still without, so it would be nice to update everybody, including our staff, as to, you know, what's going on.
And I pointed out, we're two years away from having all of our necessary spaces air-conditioned. We have 10 units scheduled for install. Well, the plan would be next summer, and then the remaining, the summer of 2020. That's the hope. All of the first floor of Bartle, most of all, the classrooms need air conditioning.
Yeah, the plan was, I think we put in place, was it one year or two years ago, to replace or to actually install a group of units each year, up to 10 each year, and thereby completing that over a course of three years.
I just want to make sure that the teachers...
Are we still on track with that?
That's the plan, yep. And Gary's been doing all that work. In fact, if you go by the high school side parking lot area, you'll see the units that he installed on the exterior walls. So, he's working hard.
When you're in a warm room, it doesn't seem like it's fast enough.
Two years, two years doesn't seem... Teachers know we are working on it. They need to know we're not forgetting about them. And, you know, parents also who are sending their kids into these classrooms that are unbearable.
Look, when some of my peers are having to close schools, certain schools, because of air conditioning, lack of air conditioning, there's some solace knowing that some of our buildings are in good shape.
Is it all at Bartle at this point?
Not all at Bartle.
No?
No, half. I'd say about 50% of Bartle.
And then the rest?
We've got some at the high school. Middle school's covered. I think Irving is covered. It's just a matter of Bartle and then the rest of the high school.
So, are those teachers and students able to move out of those rooms on those days?
If they have to, they go to the media center, right, Miss Metta Smith, or conference rooms.
Yeah. So, they're stuck in hot rooms.
If we don't have enough air-conditioned spaces for them to go to, they're stuck in the rooms.
Hold on. Okay. Did anybody else have any questions on finance and facilities? All right, so we'll move on to Personnel and Communication. Judy?
We also did not have a committee meeting this month, so I'm just going to run through the agenda items. We have our usual source for teachers sublists for 2018-19. And number three is the resignation. Brian Humphrey, our technology manager, and that will be effective November 30th for reasons of retirement. Number four is the job description for his position, or what was... With the position to replace his duties, which the title now is District Network and System Specialist. So, what we're passing around now is a little bit of a description. And in your board packet, the bigger packet, towards the back in front of the policies, is the actual job description that the personnel committee did go over. Scott, did you want to talk about it?
Sure.
I'll just elaborate on this chart I'm sharing with you. Doris recommended that I put a visual together. So, with the resignation of the manager, who we do not believe we no longer need, we would like to use the...
You said you do not believe you no longer need.
Well, that didn't... All right. We don't need a manager anymore.
Okay.
How about I be assertive on that?
Double negative.
We don't need a manager. It's an outmoded position. Our supervisor at STEM has been somewhat overseeing the department, reflection of the closer alignment of technology with instruction. So, instead, we'd like to hire an additional computer technician, but somebody who is a specialist in networking in particular. That would include putting cables in walls when we need to expand internet use, installing wireless access points, managing special networking systems on the computer. And also, knowing that we could fund this, we would like to update the part-time position to full-time. Since 2002, we've had the structure on the left. 16 years later, even though we have not been able to devote a lot of our funds to purchasing additional technology, we have nevertheless inherited more technology over time, especially over 16 years' time. We feel it's now time to bolster our tech staff. So, that's why we're doing two things, or I'm proposing two things. One, we create a new position in place of the Technology Services Manager to more accurately reflect our needs right now, which is specifically networking. And two, adapt to the change in technology since 2002, move from part-time position to full-time. Broken out the change of responsibilities. We would... I'm also proposing that if we were to promote the part-time position to a full-time status, we would take the stipend that we, the board approved, to pay, in this case, Jody Parsons to do our NJ SMART reporting. We would wrap that into that full-time position, so we would save some funds there. And I listed all the things that the District Network and System Specialist would do. So, if you have any questions.
Scott, in the current 2002 to 2018 setup, the Technology Services Manager, do the other two positions report to that person currently?
The two techs report to that person.
So, in the new proposal, where the manager no longer exists...
All to the STEM supervisor.
So, they all report to the SEM supervisor?
Correct. The STEM supervisor's responsibilities would change, because she is currently overseeing the department. That may... One of the main responsibilities of the Technology Services Manager has been to delegate work orders that come in. So, we use SchoolDude to, as there's a software package, to allow people to put requests in. I need my monitor fixed, or this fixed, internet's not working. The supervisor is recommending that the three technicians, the two technicians, the specialists, manage that on their own. That's something that can be managed. Check into the SchoolDude system. You can take responsibility for whatever's pertinent to you. Everybody can see, all three techs can see what's being delegated to who. So, this is something that can be self-managed. The manager position is outmoded, outdated, something which we could phase out. And also, I must add, manager position was associated with a heftier salary than a technician position.
Right, so will the supervisor of STEM get a... Need to get a bump in order to be...
So, this was something that Scott and I discussed when we talked about this again at our agenda meeting, is I want to make sure, before we move forward with any of this, that we have this really clear picture of who's going to assume which responsibilities and what of those would need to be stipended, because... And I was actually just trying to go back, because I have to admit, I did not, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, I didn't... I think you said we updated the job descriptions for the two supervisors, and I don't know if this was now included in that job description, because that has not historically been a part of that job description. So, I continue to have concerns about creating a, you know, a proposed structure for a position where those job responsibilities aren't outlined in their job description. That's not the position that we hired for, and then should we lose that position, that person, then having to hire someone who then has that additional expertise, which, when we originally, you know, hired this position, it was just as a science and math person, someone to supervise science and math, not to supervise a technology department? So, it's kind of like when you start branching out in a particular position for an individual who has particular skills, but then it's hard to find that combination of skills in another person. So, I mean, I think this, to my mind, still needs a lot more fleshing out, because, I mean, from 2002 to 2018, that wasn't the structure. We didn't have a supervisor of STEM for those people to report to.
I know, good point.
So, I mean, you know, the structure looked a lot different, so, you know, I think...
I should cut the box.
Between, you know, between personnel and finance, I think we still have a lot more conversations to have to figure out how this is...
Yeah, we didn't discuss at all the part-time to full-time in personnel, because we didn't have our meeting. So, I feel like I'm not ready to vote, you know? I know it's not a voting meeting, but if it were, I wasn't ready to...
Well, that... So, that... So, I think our primary need is going to be to consider what to do when Brian Humphrey leaves. So, what I'm hearing would be helpful for the board by next week, is to show the board exactly what the supervisor of STEM is doing, as she over... In this case, she oversees, as she currently does, the department. I'll break that out for you.
Well, I think that we also kind of disagree that that should be part of her responsibility.
Well, I don't even... I'm not sure if I agree or disagree.
Right, because we don't know exactly what it is.
I don't have enough information to go by.
I think once I show you exactly what her relationship is and how she's relating, how she's tying instruction into the technology, it might make more sense. Because, I mean, look, keep in mind that instructional technology is more integrated now than it was back in the early 2000s.
But still, we don't want, you know, a PhD or an EDD staff member, like, dealing with problems involving computers breaking down, you know, the technician jobs. I mean, I understand what you're saying, that the computer technicians can manage their work orders by themselves, but, you know, if there's some issue with how a computer was fixed, I mean, is that what we want in EDD level?
No, no, that's not what she's doing, which is all the reason why I need to break down that.
Right, so I think we just need more information. I think we just need additional information, like, we need to, like, look at those job descriptions and see who's doing what and what's going to be lost in the position and what Brian's been doing, and who's going to pick up those... Who's going to pick up those pieces? And if we're assigning those pieces to other people, are those going to require additional stipends? And then look at all of those.
Yeah, all the prices for all the positions.
Look at the breakage, look at the additional stipends, and see where we come out.
I will provide that additional...
As well as the... What you had said just a couple of moments ago about kind of baking in the new responsibilities into that person who may remain, and who is fantastic, but who may, you know, perhaps not be here at some point in the future.
Right, and I think Mark, you know, Mark, who's got the most experience in this field of all of us at this table, has had continued concerns about this morphing of positions. And, you know, I'm sure next week, he'll be able to articulate those.
I'll try to provide the board that information Wednesday or Thursday, so we don't have to wait until the last minute for you to look at it.
Yeah, and before next week, also, if the board could look at the job description to see if you have any of the District Network one, in case you have any input on that.
Just very quickly on the computer technician, part-time to full-time. Was that purely just for the elimination of the stipend position, or because there was more demand for it?
No, because there's a need, although if we're going to do that, we would pull back the stipend position.
Awesome. All right, so Judy, you want to keep going?
Yeah.
We've completely derailed your report.
Okay, five. Resignation of Crystal Guzman, the para lunch aide at Irving. That will be... It's already happened. Then we have a leave replacement, basic skills interventionist teacher on the agenda to prove, Teri Ann Silverman, from October 16th to June 30th, and that is at Irving. Seven is an extension of maternity leave for Laura Zaki. And number eight is the resignation of the environmental club advisor, Todd Krueger. Number nine is an extension of unpaid childcare leave for employee 0261, with revised return date of September 1st, 2019, rather than November 12th. And 10, we are removing from the agenda. And then eight is a FMLA family leave for employee 4548.
I'm sorry, you said 10 were removed from the agenda?
10 were, yes. 10 is coming off of the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? And then we have another different family leave for employee 4548. 12 is a medical leave for employee 4016 from September 24th until the end of, well, almost the end of the school year, June 21st, with estimated return date of September 1st, 2019. We have some change of hours in para, para's professional schedule, and you'll see those listed below. We have staff approval for Bartle Elementary School Reading Buddies Program. Number 15 is giving Ms. Finklin an additional instructional assignment at 1/5 of her contracted rate. Then number 16 is approving the appointment of the following teachers for independent study at the high school. Number seven is, that was for sixth grade orientation staff, to be compensated, that was on September 4th. 18 is a resolution to approve the following staff as a district translator in the language listed below. So, we have three teachers, one for Chinese, and one in Spanish, and one in Russian. Number 19 is to approve the following para professional stipend. 20 is another para stipend. 21 is the approval of home instructors, instructors for bedside tutors. One schedule B appointment for the robotics advisor. Then we have the Bartle 1 after-school tutoring teachers, number 23. 24 is the resolution to prove the Bartle Title 1 After-School Tutoring Teacher Coordinator, Mary Clermont. And 25 is Bartle Title 3 After-School ESL Teachers, Joy Chaney and Adrian Lu. And not lastly. 26 is the High School Title 1 Academic Coaches. They're stipend. 27 is Academic Coach Coordinator, Nicole Krupski, approval of that. 28 is ELL Parent Teacher Night Teachers. 29 is Middle School Title 1 Homer Program Teacher, 30, rather, High School Title 1 Tutoring Teachers from November through May. 31 is ELL Parent Night Para, to prove that. 32 is Bartle Title SCL Program School Psychologist, from Kimberly Nizolak, from November 13th to May 23rd. Number 33 is resolution to prove the Title 3 Immigrant Welcome Handbook Writing Teachers. And lastly, is the staff approval for back-to-school night babysitting at Bartle Elementary. That already happened, that was September 27th.
Judy, is that a mistake for babysitting?
That's Kim Bevelack, Laura Crane, and Mary Lewis for babysitting at $64 and $63.
That's a surprising move.
Yeah, I was a little surprised at that, too.
That's their contractual hourly rate. Normally, we have paras doing this, but no paras, so you have to do it. Wow.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, number 16, I'm wondering how French ended up as independent study. I thought, like, most independent-
If we have students who work beyond the level of French for any subject we can offer, we allow them to continue their studies on some project outside of class. So that's why we offer it. So we have, we find we have a lot of students in math, in the math area, who end up taking on independent studies.
There's still French classes, it's just an additional one.
So it's like doing a project in lieu of traditional C-type class.
Oh, okay, so these are-
It's not, French hasn't been reduced to an independent study.
Okay, right, I just heard-
Just an add-on.
Okay, just want to make sure that it's not a substitute for a French class, it's just an alternate or something. Okay.
I just thought of something, when we were talking about independent study. The cohort of seventh graders in the geometry class that we had discussed a few meetings ago, we had, I think that you had said, Dr. Taylor, that those students, when they're in eighth grade, will kind of max out of what we have available at the middle school. So they would then be put into high school classes for math.
In some cases, correct. So for instance, if a student is taking Algebra II, we don't offer that at middle school. We would try to schedule it in at the high school.
Right. So I guess I just thought that perhaps because they're so young, maybe the independent study model might be better. But that's maybe a conversation for another time. It was just kind of a thought at this moment.
Independent study is usually project-based and doesn't meet for nearly the number of hours you really, really have to, in which you'd have to participate to take a class like Algebra II. So you'd either have to offer the class at the middle school, if we had enough students, figure out a way to push in, maybe have a high school teacher pick up an additional period compensated, come down to the middle school. But I don't think the independent study would work out.
Okay. And at that point, I mean, the kids would only be, I mean, already in middle school, sixth graders are in class with eighth graders, you know, it wouldn't really be terribly different, I wouldn't think, you know what I mean? If eighth graders are taking classes with ninth graders or-
But I don't know if that's really the same scenario, because they're not leaving the middle school.
Right.
The sixth graders would be with the eighth graders in the middle school.
They do still sometimes leave the middle school now, though, for a course and-
Yeah, my four-and-a-half-foot-tall daughter got caught in a stream of very tall people in the high school. So they do mix, I know that. But I know that the reason that the middle school is separated from the high school has been, like, you know, founded on lots of conversation and study. So I just, I just thought maybe that was a solution for that cohort of students. Because at the back-to-school night, apparently, the teacher that is now serving geometry to them really did not know what to tell parents, because parents did ask, what do we do next year with our eighth graders? And it sounded like, and not to put this teacher on the spot, but it sounded like that was, you know, yet to be seen. And so when I heard that, I thought, you know, as a board member sitting at the table, we had talked about that plan, and I didn't know if that was actually a plan that was, you know, something we committed to or not. So I just thought that my independent study idea might be a solution to keep those middle schoolers in the middle school.
Okay. Do we have anything else? Any other questions for personnel?
Could I, on the babysitting question?
Would it be inappropriate for high school students to be given the opportunity to do that?
No, NHS students, they've done that in the past. I'm not sure why they didn't do it in this case. Perhaps they weren't available, couldn't get kids to come. We've done that in the past for other events.
So I think we'll, I think that the message is clear, though, that we should try to, you know, maybe not do that in the future, if at all possible. Okay, so let's move on to, if there aren't any other questions, let's move on to policies with Ann.
Yes, policy. Okay, so we met a couple of weeks ago, and we essentially talked about the policies you're going to see right here. And these are important policies, I want to make clear, but what we did at our meeting was just look at Strauss Esme's proposed provisions that sort of bring the policy language and, language up to date. For example, we, the policy, Policy 5750, equal education opportunity, equal educational opportunity, obviously a very important policy. We didn't do anything to it this time beyond adding the important categories of gender, gender identity or expression, socioeconomic status of those categories to the list of sort of protected categories. Students in those categories, you know, we want to be sure that they have equal access to educational opportunities. I could have said that in a much more concise manner. There's also a few just sort of language changes that you'll see highlighted, you know, the word through replaced with throughout. So it's pretty self-explanatory. It adds some protected categories that are very important, but we didn't look at this, we didn't sort of go into the policy as a whole and see what kind of changes, if any, we wanted to make. So I guess if board members do want to engage in that broader discussion, they should feel free to start that discussion, or email me, or Dr. Taylor. Same is true of 7510. We did not sort of look at it as an overall policy. There's all kinds of interesting questions you could ask about this policy. The only thing we did was accept Strauss Esme's suggestion that those who rent our facilities must name us as additionally insured, or as an additionally insured. It's basically adding an insurance requirement, or adding the requirement that we be named in whatever insurance policy they have. 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children, pretty trivial changes added. If you're going to report abuse, you can use any telephone number that the Division of Child Protection and Permanency designates. Some other not very exciting things. It looks like they have taken, I'm not sure when this happened, actually, the final paragraph talks about, the final paragraph is crossed, it's bold and crossed out. It says, "Any employee, volunteer, or intern who suspects a child," oh, I see, "has attempted or contemplated suicide."
I actually looked at this when I reviewed it, and it, we do have, there is a whole separate policy on, on issues around, you know, yeah. But it looks like that needs some work. So it kind of made me want to take a look at that policy at the same time. So the other policy is 5350, student suicide prevention.
Okay.
And that one really looks like it needs an update. 5350, so I'm wondering if, I mean, but that policy has been in existence since 2004, so I'm not, I don't understand why there, I had the same question, like, why are they getting rid of that entire last paragraph? Like, why is that?
Well, I mean, there's, they certainly didn't, they probably did explain it to us somewhere in some of these documents they send around. It's possible they wanted to avoid what would happen if, if I see a child who, you know, is potentially suicidal, directing me to contact DIFIS is potentially a dangerous situation. Right, I mean, perhaps I would want to start by contacting the student's parents, if that was appropriate, administrators.
But I think there are very clear guidelines on what needs to be done if a student is presenting a suicidal and can't contract for safety. So, and then when I looked at the suicide prevention policy, that didn't seem to have been updated recently enough. It still refers to DIFIS, and that's not the name of the order, you know, they're not called DIFIS anymore. So I think we may have missed a policy alert. My sense is we missed a policy alert somewhere along the line here.
Okay, let's find out. I do want to, I don't, I mean, I would agree with Strauss Esme's recommendation as to this policy, which, as you said, should be evaluated in conjunction with the other one. I don't want to say that employees, volunteers, or interns are required to contact the Division of Child Protection and Permanency whenever they suspect suicidal impulses.
Well, and it does say the child study team may contact the New Jersey-
Oh, I'm looking at any employee volunteer-
No, yeah, I'm saying in the other policy.
I see, I see.
In the other existing policy, it says that the child study team may contact the New Jersey Division of People Development Services.
So should we just take, you want to table this for now, and then take a look at the ...
I mean, I think you can, I mean, this other policy is already in existence, so I think it's okay to move forward with that one, with the deletion of that information, because there is something somewhat duplicative in another policy. But I think that policy now needs to be looked at, because it seems to be outdated, and we seem to have missed a policy revision or four.
I would imagine.
I'm going to put it on our agenda. We have a meeting on the 29th.
Next agenda, excellent. Thank you, Scott. All right, so there we are, and that concludes my policy report.
Does anybody have any questions or additional concerns about those policies? Okay, so equity and excellence. Lommy, do you have anything for us?
Nothing new to report. We will be meeting this Thursday.
Awesome. Okay, lots of meetings coming up. Should have a busy meeting next week. So that brings us to public comment. And Lynda did alert me at the beginning of the meeting that our agenda was a bit misnumbered. So where it says number 12 is public comment, it's actually number 14. So then everything obviously gets adjusted downwards from 14 through 19 instead of 12 through 17. So item 14 on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? No public comment this evening, okay. So that brings us at 9:14 to the president's report and board goal. So Scott is going to put those up on our handy-dandy screen over there, so we can take a look at those. And I did sit this morning and watch all 2 hours and 15 minutes of last month's board meeting, so I could get a sense of what you guys did or didn't discuss in general, but also anything related to the board goals. So I was kind of tuned into the conversation that happened last month related to trying to make sure that something remains in the goals in terms of not just our work around restorative practices, but also towards more equity in terms of academic, thank you. Words were escaping me. Yeah, in terms of academic achievement. So I think we need to make sure we are, we're looking at these through, through that lens.
Excellent.
I'll seal it, given it's-
And we all have this, is this in our materials for this month as well? It should be, right? It was definitely under the president's report materials in our, sorry, am I using my mic? In our, no, I don't think it's there.
Okay, I'm going to send everybody the link right now, and I'll put the, an alias of the link into the president's report, so you click it. But here it comes.
You're sending it via email?
Yeah, I'm going to send it to everybody via email.
Sometimes it's easier for us to look at it on our individual screens than, you just send it to the board, just board.
Just, I don't think I, I have to send it to each one of you.
Oh, do you?
Individually by name. But I'm just about there.
So did, that was the one thing I picked up from the last meeting, that I think there was a pretty clear consensus that we wanted to add in. Did anybody else have any strong feelings of anything that needed to be removed or added, or based on taking a look at it last month or this month?
Okay, should all have it. Again, I'll put a copy, a file copy in the president's report folder, too. So you double-click it, it should take you right to the, right to the, actually, you know what I'm going to share with you folks, too.
Geez, even on my screen, it's too small for me to see. I need new glasses.
Avery, I'm sending, actually, I'm sending it to both of your HP schools' accounts. So I started the process, made updates according to the strategic plan, tried to reflect a few things the board has been discussing, but I recognize these are the board's goals, so I'm just here to get you going.
Well, I mean, I think it's also important to keep in mind that the board goals are, what I think the board goals need to be, is that interface between what we went out to the community and discussed for our strategic plan, which included, you know, staff and students and parents and, you know, all of us coming together around those issues. And then this is kind of where that strategic plan, like, where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, because the board goals are then what we base Dr. Taylor's evaluation on. So, you know, it only makes sense for us to be basing his evaluation on the, you know, on what's in the strategic plan, what we as a community have come together and decided, hey, here are the things that we want to work on for, for the next few years, until we all come together again to, to reassess that. So, you know, I think it's really important for those all to reflect each other, which is why I feel, you know, very, you know, no one's more familiar with that strategic plan document than Dr. Taylor, which is why I feel comfortable for him to go through these goals and take a look and compare it to that strategic plan to say, okay, well, these are things we've already checked off, so we can take these off the goals. But then, you know, we can go in and tweak them to, you know, to clarify any language that we want, or to, you know, add anything that's in keeping with those, with those broader goals, and then more specific action steps.
There's one thing that jumps out at me in the goal number one, and that's the word homework. Because some issues have, you know, come up with homework and, you know, technology that the students may or may not have access to, that's required for homework, you know, using Google Classroom, for example. Seems like Google Classroom has become the standard for a lot of teachers to communicate.
That was really striking at back-to-school night this year, that there's, we're relying a lot on Google Classroom, and, yeah.
Right. And that concerns me for a lot of different reasons, but mostly because of equity issues.
Absolutely.
So I feel that we are, you know, we're pushing forward in one area when we're really lax in others. And so, you know, we're not supportive of, you know, both, well, we're not supportive of any of those moves. As far as gaining access to Wi-Fi as, you know, a town-wide initiative, I really feel like that's got to be something that we make some progress on.
Well, and Wi-Fi doesn't do you a darn bit of good if you don't have a device, you know? I mean, I think the, and that was something that I picked up in the conversation from last month's meeting, too, which was this, the idea about the, what to do about families that are not responding to requests for payment for delinquent lunches to take Genesis access away. Right now, we're not, we're not providing parents paper copies of their students' report plans. So why would we want to take some of our most disenfranchised students and take their parents' access away to letting them know how their kids are doing academically? I feel like we're already disenfranchising. Even as a parent with multiple computers in the house, I have to admit that sometimes I just don't, it just doesn't, it doesn't hit, like, oh, my kid's grades are out, I need to go look at my kid's grades.
And there are 20 websites. I mean, for two kids, it must be even more, well, I have two kids in middle school now, too. I mean, we must have had, like, 20 websites that the kids need to keep track of, some of which we sort of need to keep track of, particularly if you have a kid with any sort of special needs. I mean, it was overwhelming, and we have multiple, you know, computers of various abilities and ages. So I was going to bring this up in old business, I'm glad you brought it up. I don't know if we want to include that in the goals here somehow, but it can't-
I think the problem, the issue is, it's there, but I don't know that it's happening. It's, I think what Michelle is pointing out is that we are, we seem to be moving full steam ahead to a lot of the stuff that kids are doing, both in class and for homework, and how we're communicating with families being in this digital format. But we still haven't resolved the issue of unequal access. Who can actually do that? Are kids reliably able to sign out devices and Wi-Fi hotspots if they have work to do? And, you know, are they doing that reliably?
And how many kids are there?
Well, yeah, that's the question. Do we know?
Right.
It's totally anecdotal, but I can tell you that in just my small circle-
No, I honestly, I mean, I appreciate that, but I think that we need actual data.
Oh, yeah, no, of course we need data. But I'm just saying that it's, what I'm thinking is that it is more of a problem than we conceive of.
Right. Anyway, with regard to that word homework, I don't think it's needed in the sentence.
Yeah, I mean, that word just kind of, you know, it was, for me, it sends off a few different thoughts.
Yeah, because it's more than just homework, it's just complete assignments in general, whether they're homework or a regular school assignment in class, whatever, whatever kind of assignment it is.
Right.
But one, one other thing to throw in there, I would love to see something for the parents in terms of either something on the website that could be linked to, to kind of go, here's how you work through Genesis, and then also something on the website for the parents, but like, here's how you work through and get to a Google Classroom. Because my-
And, here's how you look at the custom Google sites that many teachers have. So many of my kids' classes have both a classroom site that needs to be checked out, and also a custom Google- and also a custom Google site that has homework assignments and stuff like that on it. Some of it is just sort of extra help, in case you forget your homework assignment at school, you can go to the custom Google site. These are all accessible through the web. But, I mean, there have got to be parents who just have absolutely no idea. And if we want, if we want, if we think that's fine, that parents don't know, okay. But if we want, you know, I mean, you know, they're in middle school, maybe they should be managing that part themselves. It doesn't deal with the equity, it deals with the parents. So I don't know.
I'm lucky, I have a board of ed computer, and I have a computer that's provided by my work.
Right.
I have a Wi-Fi that's provided by my work. And I'm completely connected, but I still have a, I don't know how many years now with Google Classrooms, and I still feel like I am a first-year student in terms of getting to the Google Classrooms and understanding what's there.
There's an entire WikiHow page. No, I mean, I'm serious, there's like dozens of different tutorials. It's difficult, is my point.
Yes, yes, it is difficult.
Well, parents are actually, on Google Classroom, I know from, both of my parents have mentioned this, Google Classroom sends you notifications, so they'll send notifications to parents when teachers post assignments, so like due dates and stuff to their emails.
Sometimes. I mean, it can be set up that way, but they're not all set up that way.
They need to be, if you do this, then they can be linked up, so you'll just get one email that gets all of them.
And some have like a parent sign in for the class, others don't. So I just signed in as my kids, you know, because my kids maybe need a little bit more scaffolding for organizing themselves. So it's, I get sort of a random hodgepodge of notifications. Do you think, should we wait for public comment?
I don't need, I don't know how to get from those emails to actual Google Classroom. There isn't like a click here to see, you know, like, I have to admit, I have not worked through that system either, and I don't. I don't know why I'm getting these emails, I don't know what I'm supposed to do with them.
She was raising her hand.
Well, we can't.
No, I just wanted to let you know.
Oh, sorry.
President.
Can I just make a point, just, maybe just my lens here, but I'm just wondering if, I think that point that we were discussing that Michelle opened up here is more of an equity issue here. It doesn't really belong under goal one, which speaks to supporting the, you know, the whole child.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
You know, I, maybe it's my lens, but here, that last bullet point is certainly about equitable access to the instructional resources, which would seem to fit better under goal two, which is, you know, inclusion is toward for the students of all backgrounds. So that's just a, just a board.
So, yeah, I agree. Right. And I would, I mean, I would go, I agree with moving it, and I would go so far as to like, strike not just homework, but the whole thing about complete assignments, because what I was hearing was there were, you know, you can study on Quizlet, you can, you know, so it's not just homework, it's not just classwork, it's studying for your tests and your quizzes. It's, I mean, it's really for everything that kids are doing now. If you are at home without computer access, you're not able to study the way other kids are able to study, you're not able to complete your homework the way other kids are able to complete your homework. You're at this massive, massive disadvantage.
And could I just say, as having two boys who went through the middle school, well, one that went through middle school and the other went through high school, this is a big change over the past few years, just three or four years. I remember that when my sixth grader was now in the ninth grader, started sixth through eighth grade, there was maybe one or two teachers that used Google Classroom, and it wasn't really a requirement to get things done. You could work around not having Google Classroom access, that was almost like a plus, you know? So, you know, I think this conversation about, you know, we're talking about parents figuring out how to use it, but first and foremost, it's like, well, who doesn't have access to it in terms of the students?
It's a little upsetting because we've talked about this so many times. We've never actually done that research, have we, to like actually make a concerted effort to reach as many families in the district as possible and find out what they do or don't have in their homes? Do you have a computer that your student can work on? Do you have access to Wi-Fi?
But Ann has asked me to do that for the board, and I plan on doing that. It's gonna take some time, but it'll be done.
Scott, I appreciate you doing that. I do feel a little frustrated on this issue though, because I feel like we talk about this several times a year, you know, this issue with computers being required for out-of-school work. And, you know, there was gonna be a discussion with, what, no, this is worse. It's getting, right, it's getting worse. So I don't know if, if, you know, staff aren't taking to heart the guidance that you're giving them, you know, you were gonna give some guidance about not assigning homework that required computer and internet access.
Well, look, I mean, besides giving directives, I have not been asking the principals to hold all their teachers accountable by checking their lesson plans and randomly, you know, I mean, it's a very hard thing to hold people accountable to do unless I catch wind of it for a parent or a board member who has a concern about it. So I, I mean, we could make this a very high priority effort, but frankly, I think it's gonna be difficult. I completely agree with the board.
Of course it will be, yes, it will be difficult. But, I mean, this has been going on for years, and we've been talking about it. I mean, before you came, we were talking about it, there's this, you know, digital gap, and what are we gonna do about it, and it's just making the opportunity gap worse. And there's been no movement at all, as Darcy said, it's gotten worse. So I don't know what's happening, if it's just impossible to teach, you know, a modern school without this stuff, and if it is, then maybe we do have to move to a one-to-one and cancel some other programs. I mean, I'd rather see us not do that, I'd rather see us back off on the online homework and the online, all the quiz stuff and the online, you know, everything's online. And it's a wonderful thing for those of us with computers.
My guess is my predecessors feel the same way I do. This is such a difficult nut to crack for a couple of reasons. One, because it's hard to hold people accountable, in the case of homework, not assigning homework, to be sure that that's not happening. And two, I've got faculty who are reading all this press about other schools' districts becoming future-ready and future-forward. And technology is obviously pervasive, it's everywhere, who want to embrace it as an engaging way to promote instruction. But at the same time, the reality is, we can't afford to do what we need to do to provide technology to parents.
I think this is one of the harsh realities of Highland Park, right? We're not one of those districts that is completely affluent, where all of the kids have their own devices, they have laptops of their own, they have phones of their own, they have all of this technology at home to be able to do this on their own. We're also not the district that is completely free and reduced lunch, that qualifies for all kinds of additional aid and can get grants and sponsors and all kinds of things to make sure that all of the kids have the technology. We are smack in the middle, where we don't have enough kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch to put us on that list where we get all this stuff. But we also, you know, we've got that wacky imbalance that just puts us in like nowhere land, you know? So nobody wants to help us get technology into the hands of our kids who don't have it. We don't qualify for anything. So we have, we, we just start off with a have-and-have-not situation. And it's difficult. I mean, it's difficult for the teachers, it's difficult for the administration, it's, but most of all, it's really difficult for those students who have expectations on them, that they walk in the door not being able to meet.
They're falling behind already. I mean, my kid didn't realize he was supposed to be on Quizlet in one of his classes, because he was not paying attention. So he failed his first quiz. You know, fortunately, he has Quizlet, and he has someone who's home frequently to like remind him to use it. But, I mean, what about those kids that don't have access to Quizlet at all? I mean, like, I saw, this was, this would be my child without a computer at home. He would be failing his tests. And yes, he could go to the teacher and say like, could you print out some words for me, and I'll make my own flashcards, but, you know, he's a middle school student, and it's much harder.
Before we take any actions on changing the policy around technology use or pursuing, getting technology to the students, I think we need to look at some of the surveys we've done, because I think in, we have taken a survey, I do distinctly remember taking a survey about Wi-Fi access and technology access.
This year?
Last year.
Last year?
No, I'm pretty sure it was on a Google form.
I don't remember.
If we have that information, obviously, that would be critical to.
Yeah, it was either in one of this like school climate reports, or maybe not, but I distinctly remember taking one of those surveys at, you know, in homeroom.
Yeah, we do surveys every year. I just don't think we've taken a deeper dive into the data like we should, which you, they're prompting me to do. So, yeah, you know, like actually find out to the, to the, like, almost microscopic level, what does somebody have at home? Not just technology or technology, but what exactly.
In the interim, I think one of the easiest ways to do it is to speak to the, to get the principals in a room, to put their heads together about this, and to speak to the teachers, to say, if your expectation is that kids are studying on Quizlet, then before those kids walk out of your classroom, you need to be asking those kids, do you have a computer at home to study on Quizlet? Don't just assume that the kids in your class are gonna be able to do that, ask them. And if they don't, then those teachers need to be responsible for getting those devices into those kids' hands before they walk out of the building.
Right, right.
The teachers, I mean, it's. I'm sorry, the teachers would have to be responsible for, do we have, like, loner?
Yeah.
We have enough.
Well, we do, we have after-school labs open.
That's great, yeah. I mean, I agree completely with that suggestion, Darcy, because what can we do in the meantime, while you're getting data together, sorry, to get the numbers? There has to be something to be done so that no child is going home knowing, and probably not saying that he or she or does not, or they do not have access to the internet to do an assignment. I mean, that just has to stop. And we know what's happening to whether it's one kid, or whether it's, you know, 200 kids, it's happening.
Right. And the computer lab is great, but it's very limited, because, you know, that's what we have money to pay for, so.
And another issue that you and I have been discussing is those kids who live up in Cedar Lane.
Right.
They can't stay for that, you know, if they miss their bus, they don't get home. So, you know, I mean, it's great to have that as a resource, but if, you know, the kids that we're trying to reach, trying the hardest to reach, can't make use of it.
Yeah, I can say that I think that we underestimate how many families really actually genuinely don't have access to the internet.
Yeah.
I mean, I have my own family members who kids have to go to the library after school because, you know, their parents don't have internet access at home, aside from a cellphone. So I think it's hard for us, you know, many of us and teachers as well, to really come to full grips with that, especially as a teacher where everything now is so driven with the digital environment. It's the way you stay connected, it's the way you get access to more information, obviously. So it's easy for the teachers to have veered on down that path, not even thinking that there is a population here that we have to be accountable to.
How do you want this reflect, this conversation reflected in the board goals, aside from what we already included? Is there more language you want to add to that?
So I think that line is the perfect place to put it. So provide students and their families guardians equitable access to instructional resources, including those necessarily to successfully, I'm trying to think of some wording to say, to successfully, like.
Participate in the class.
Yeah.
And complete all coursework.
Yeah, right.
Participate and complete all coursework, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's also things that are group texts that are homework-related. You know, Google Classroom has.
Google reminds.
Yeah, there's, so you can have like conversations going on that are school-related conversations that are not, you know, private groups of friends, but that are, you know, on Google, or perhaps Quizlet has it as well. But, you know, there's entire portions of social interaction that the kids are not able to access if they don't have a device of their own. Not just have a device in the house and Wi-Fi for the family, but one of their own. You know, not, not many of us.
Okay, so I think we, I think we've identified the problem. I think what we have to do is figure out the way to put it into the goals.
Yeah, I would say participate in class, that's good. Because it really is a whole class experience that's been missed out on.
But it's more than that too, though, right?
I am very much in favor of what we're trying to do here. I think we need to be very careful about what we're saying that we can do. So we just need, we need, just need to be realistic. And I'm not looking to water it down or make it, you know, whatever, but I feel like we need to be careful about what we're saying.
So I think we need to add something in.
These are goals, of course, they're goals.
Well, first, we need to move.
Right.
Yeah, goals should be kind of lofty.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff here that we have not done.
But we also do have to make them attainable, because again, this is, you know, this is how we evaluate Scott at the end of the year. So, you know, we can't make them something that he can't possibly achieve, and then be like, haha, you didn't do it. You couldn't do it, I knew it.
But every year, there are goals that we have not met, and we're, you know, making progress. We're happy with progress. So, you know, first of all, move that last sentence down to goal number two.
Already there.
And, oh, it's not showing.
So should we put in something, something along the lines of especially, like, is it, like, digital? What's the right word there?
Digital environments.
First of all, I'd like to say that we should ensure that our faculty are mindful of the digital divide that may be present in their students' homes.
I think some of the faculty are. I remember my daughter coming home saying, I'm not getting homework from my teacher right now because she was told that she can't assign homework because everyone has a computer.
That's, I've never heard that from my students.
It was, I think that one teacher had just taken it slightly further than the intention from the administration, where it was to be mindful of the divide instead of just, I'm gonna respond to the divide by not giving homework. And I believe my daughter exaggerated perhaps a little bit on that one too, because I think that did change.
I do understand the frustration, you know.
Of course, of course.
An educator, you want to use the best tools that are available to you. But to not be sensitive that there is a great inequity in digital access.
And that's what I'm saying, I think the teachers are sensitive, and it's one of those things where a timely reminder is helpful for all of them to know where they're at.
I will say, back-to-school night, only one teacher raised the issue with parents, and you know how to write confidentially on the information forms.
So again, I just wanna, I just wanna.
Okay, okay, let's go back to.
I think we've sufficiently identified the problem, and we don't have to keep, we don't have to keep giving, citing evidence of the problem, but we do need to figure out how to get it into a goal. So I changed, I changed that.
F5, in my refresh. Oh, you didn't?
Sorry.
Mine is.
So I changed it, and this might be clunky, provide students and their families guardian equitable access to instructional resources, particularly, technology, that's clunky, including those necessary to successfully meet all classroom expectations. Does that, does that cover it, the meet all classroom expectations?
Yes.
Okay, but particularly technology is clunky. Provide students and their families guardians equitable access to... I mean, do we just change it to technology?
No, I would leave it as instructional resource and/or particularly technology.
Including, particularly?
Including that necessary to, I mean, can we just say, including?
Oh, how about including?
Yeah, including.
The technology necessary, no. To successfully meet all classroom expectations.
That's great, I like that.
Including the technology necessary, is that where we put it?
Yeah.
Technology necessary to successfully meet classroom expectations if necessary, right? I mean, so we're not saying.
Well, if necessary is, oh, sorry. If necessary is implied, right, I think.
Well, not necessarily, it could be like, okay, well, you need to do this on a computer, so now you get a computer, you know, like, I mean.
Oh, I see.
We're gonna provide that to everyone, but if you don't already in your home have.
So that goes back to my being mindful suggestion. We need to know who has need.
Right.
We cannot expect students to come forward and say that.
And I think, I think, I think it's gonna be incumbent on, Dr. Taylor, who's now chewing on a cracker. Go ahead, now talk. Now whistle.
I need carbs.
Whistle while you eat that cracker. It's gonna be incumbent on you to speak with the principals to then relay that to the teachers to say, you know, and then to get that data on a, on a more global level so we can take a look at that and actually look at.
To address this particular subquote.
And to put a Band-Aid in place in the meantime, making sure that.
Well, I think that talking to the principals and talking to the teachers is to put the Band-Aid on, but then at the same time, to be getting that larger set of data that we can look at and say, okay, we actually have a tenth of our students who can't complete these assignments, or 20%, or 15%, you know, whatever that number is. And I don't think any of us know what that is. And, you know, I mean, it is gonna require some effort to get, you know, as many responses as possible from, from students, but.
Just a quick follow-up about the Band-Aid. Do we, remind me, I'm sorry, do we have Wi-Fi access points or modems or something that can be checked out? We do, okay. Excellent, thank you.
Should I delete the sentence under goal one now?
Yes.
All right, I'll take it up.
But I do think that homework did belong in goal number one, because that has been something that I know you, Dr. Taylor, have talked about, researching best practices for, you know, homework, and whether or not it should be graded, whether or not, you know, we should give homework of any amount, or if not, none at all. I mean, that's a huge chunk of research that we still need to do.
Yeah, can we un-delete that? Or undelete it, I guess, just one un. Under goal one, it says, take action on results of research by implementing updated homework protocols. Are we, are we feeling that that's sort of like too much to add to our plate? We want to do that a different year?
We haven't been able to take action because we haven't been able to get the results researched really understood by everyone at all.
I was just wondering if it was deleted because we felt like we were focusing on too many things, and we want to come back to that? I don't know, what did you, why did you delete that, Scott? Was that to put it, put it over to a different year?
I don't see any problem leaving.
Oh, okay.
Where it is, because if anything, it's, you know, in the case of my evaluation, Where it is, because if anything, it's, you know, in the case of my evaluation, there are three levels, right? Either I'm not making any progress at all, I'm making some progress, or I've actually achieved the goal. This is one of those goals in which I'd probably be making progress.
Right, right, oh, yeah, absolutely. So how do we undelete, take action on results of research?
Undelete it.
Yeah, but it's, for me, it's und deleting everything that's deleted there.
Well, well.
Not for you?
All right.
If you can do that, that's great. I didn't want to undelete everything. I just wanted to undelete, take action on results of research.
Can you do that, Scott? You're the one who, I don't know.
I might have to undelete everything and then delete again. I also.
Are we presupposing that there's some sort of change that we need to do to our homework protocols currently?
We don't know because we haven't discussed the research, right? I mean, I mean, if we, maybe not.
Right.
Well, according to Facebook, we do.
All right, moving along.
It's a source of information.
Can we make a concerted effort not to invoke Facebook at table? Yeah, so Scott, can you, do you know how to undelete all of that and just, or make a notation to yourself that we're leaving in the homework?
Yeah.
Do we also want to undelete, I mean, did we feel like the parent workshops, the provide, to provide child development support, are those, is that sort of not a workable goal any longer? Is that sort of an example of us trying to bite off too much? Is that, why is it deleted?
Especially with a brand-new principal now at Irving. I think that was geared towards the Irving community and I think it would certainly behoove us to let that principal get her room.
Sink her teeth in for a while?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get feet on the ground.
Yes.
So we'll.
Here we go.
There you go.
But I'm, all right, let me delete the other.
Right.
I mean, what about ensure, I mean, I just wasn't clear on why all of these were deleted and I'm fine with it, like, ensure that the push for acquisition of academic skills in the primary grades, not super state edge of primary, but, I mean, that's still a goal of ours, is it?
It is, but I.
Is it deleted because we don't want to focus on it?
No, I think maybe it was deleted because it needs to be reworded, that's my guess.
Oh, oh, okay. Is that, is that right, Scott? It is, so how did you want to reword?
How what, sorry?
The sentence that starts, ensure that the push for acquisition of academic skills.
Where are you?
I'm at the, at the end of goal one. That was one of the ones that was deleted and I'm wondering if we deleted it because it's, again, one of too much that we bit off last year and we want to work on that at a different time, or if it's deleted because it's no longer our goal? Why, why was it deleted?
We came back and we're, we have much more play-based learning in Irving School. So we put together a focus on having play-based learning as part of that. So in many ways, I almost feel like we did attain that goal because we effectively brought about some changes in protocols there that allowed for that to occur.
It's, my guess is that we still have more to do. I mean, this is one big conversation about how like we want to return to this kind of approach.
We have an entire study group that hasn't completed its work.
Oh, okay. So we should leave that goal in there, right? I mean, even if it's like not much of a goal anymore because we're almost there.
Yeah, I find that this goal separates play-based learning from academic skills and those are not separated in pedagogy. It's, play-based learning is the acquisition of academic skills. It's you're just doing it in a different way. You're not sitting at a desk, listening to a lecture, you're learning through play. So you're still acquiring academic skills.
I think kindergartners do fine listening to lectures.
Well, I mean, they can sit still for a very long time.
See tomorrow's advancement.
I'm just, I'm hesitant to leave things in just because we, you know, like, where do we make the determination that we've attained the goal and we take it out? Because we could always do slightly better.
Well, we should maybe wait for the study group to finish. I mean, that, that would seem like, like a bright line that we could draw, maybe, I don't know. That, why do we have the study group if we're going to just take it out?
Questioning whether we should, I mean, I'm losing track of the thread here, but I think, I would keep this language intact. This is the first year of our work in this area.
Okay. We can, yeah, no, it was struck out, that's why we're talking about it.
So maybe it was struck out.
Maybe it was an accident or something, okay. Michelle, did you want to propose a change to the way it talks about play-based learning as an opposition to academic?
I mean, when I first read it, I thought, well, it's struck through because it needs to be reworded, but, so my, my assumption was that we need to reword it to reflect the idea that we are moving toward a different philosophy of academic acquisition in younger students so that we're not.
Right, right, so how we say it.
So maybe we just move, we move.
So we need to say, ensure that we are.
That play-based learning.
Play-based.
Exactly. That play-based learning is an integral part of the acquisition.
Have we already conducted research or like research into how effective play-based learning is?
It's actually the base, where Irving School, the way Irving School has always been structured, it was a move away from that in the last four or five years and now we're trying to steer it back to where it was. But yeah, absolutely. I mean, anyone who studies early childhood development would tell you that you don't want to sit a bunch of kids in rows and stand there and lecture at them. You want to engage them in activities and that the way young children learn is through play.
We've actually had a professor at Marinas from a North Jersey college who is a specialist in early childhood learning, provide, the leadership team on a lot of research in this area, quantitative and qualitative data supporting the effectiveness of it.
Essential what? Essential?
So, it's a good question.
Component. Component, thank you. That's just a fancy word for part. Component is the, I like the component in the acquisition, in the acquisition of academic skills in the primary grades.
The only one, the only word I want to change there is ensure that play-based curriculum is a central component of the acquisition of academic skills.
Play-based curriculum?
Is that fair to say, Scott?
Yep. Does that read, how does that read? Ensure that play-based curriculum is a central, is the central component?
Yeah.
The. Is the central component in the acquisition of academic skills in the primary grades.
Right.
Perfect. Can we say a little bit more about, instead of just saying orienting the school community to the new codes of conduct, can we be more specific as to, you know, we see, we've identified that we have this, you know, disproportionality going on and that it's our goal to decrease that, you know, that.
Work towards decreasing.
Exactly. It's, it's to work towards equity, I don't know how to say it, and discipline, you know, I think that's our goal, more so than orienting the school community to our new codes of conduct.
Oh, yeah, that's more like.
Our codes of conduct are there so that we work on, you know, our discipline has a higher.
So maybe we just want to add to the end of that sentence, like, for the purpose of, so orient school community to the new codes of conduct for the purpose of eliminating disproportionality in our student.
Well, I'd like to see the first part come first.
I would, oh, I'd like to see, yeah.
I think that's more important, eliminating the disparity.
The orienting the codes of conduct seems like, almost like an operational thing?
Right.
Like the principals will do that presumably, that's implied, right?
Right. We, I agree, I just think it's critical that we move toward. I just think this is, again, more of an equity.
Yes.
Point here that doesn't quite fit under the, the goal, the larger goal or border goal, number one, right? Which is just, is there an equity goal somewhere here? Or is this, it's number two.
I feel like there is an equity goal, but I can't find it.
How could that not be here? Because to me, that's where like that would go, that's where the other. The technology access. Equitable access would go.
I mean, goal, is goal two supposed to get it equity, even though it doesn't use the word? It talks about inclusion and support.
It should fit there, but it doesn't quite, so there's no distinct.
So how would you, how would you change that, the overall goal for two to?
Because we have the word equitable. For equitable access and inclusion and then have support, equitable access, inclusion and support of students.
And equitable provision of educational, education two or something. Shoulder students.
I don't know, I can't.
Equitably provide educational opportunities to students. I mean, I don't know, something like that. It's really awkward, but.
Do you think we should work in something about promoting safety and, you know, proper behavior in schools?
Wait, let's, can we, let's tackle one thing at a time.
I don't know where that goes.
The district will.
Why can't we just say ensure the equitable?
Why don't we just get rid of ensure? The district will equitably provide educational opportunities to students of all abilities. Just get rid of that middle part altogether.
Yeah. Yeah, that covers inclusion and support.
Yep.
But I think what we were originally talking about, orient the school community to the new codes of conduct, doesn't necessarily belong in supporting the whole child.
Yep.
In the way that it's worded that.
Well, but it can go, I think it can easily go right under there as one of the, one of the things that we're doing towards that goal of more equity, because that is the whole point of the code of conduct, is to ensure, or to attempt to ensure, that we're using the same measuring stick for infractions of the code of conduct regardless of who it is that's committing that fraction.
Although in goal two, educational is the operative word, so if that's the case, we would probably want to add something for two to include.
Right.
That we're including discipline also, right?
So maybe orienting the school community.
Well, just, I think we could just take out educational. I mean, it's provide opportunities, whether those be educational or emotional or.
Opportunity not being attention.
Right? Because, I mean, all those things that are listed under there aren't all about. Can we break out?
There's so many, there's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, because I think a lot of those are dealing with educational opportunities, right? I mean, it is about inclusion of special needs students, it's about professional development.
The district will equitably provide educational opportunities to all students, period.
Consider students' different abilities, right? Is that good?
No, I think that part's fine, but I, I mean, I think we need to figure out, I think we're trying to figure out this differentiation between educational opportunities and the other work that we're trying to do.
So the discipline can go under, I mean, because we have, i.e. the academic, social, emotional and mental wellness of every student. I mean, that's what discipline is. You're teaching, you're shaping behavior for the, you know, for the child's own good. I mean, you're trying to teach them how to learn from their mistakes and move on. So it can fit there. I just want to change the way that we say it.
But we're trying to get kids to manage their emotions, right? To manage their behaviors.
Right, right. That sits there.
Be self.
While also, our main goal also is to reduce, so maybe it's two separate things. I think it should be separate, yeah. I think there should be a clear decision that we also. Disproportionality and then on top, the codes of conduct more as a guide for students.
But what else would be pulled out for the social and emotional piece?
For the codes of conduct, you mean?
Yeah.
Then, how do we, so how do we say it, right? Using the codes of conduct, we are, I'm trying to say like we're, we're helping to guide the child to make the right decisions. So how can we say it? That's your area.
Self-regulation, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so how can we say that?
So.
Promoting self-regulation through our codes of conduct and social.
Well, how about something like, encourage students to self-regulate the behaviors in an effort to promote a stronger community or something like that? I'm trying to tie in community there, too.
But are we saying, are we saying this is a separate goal or is this?
No, 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 as a result of the new codes of conduct. The codes of conduct are driving that.
Instead of the orient.
I'm going to throw something out.
But where would that, where would that, where's that going to go?
On the top.
That's going to stay under one, okay.
So instead of the orient, school community to the codes of conduct, right?
Oh, good, you found a font that's even smaller.
I can't read it at all. Even newspaper.
I don't know how that happened.
Let's make that seven.
Oh, that's it.
Is there a magnifying screen?
Yeah, you're at length. I'm going to make it like 10. Oh, yeah, that's crazy.
So one of the, one of the problems that, like, I sort of see within like these goals is within goal two, it's the research detracking in middle school math classes and then promote mixed ability classes in high school level. So like I, after, like, so after the first board meeting.
Wait, can we, I'm sorry, can we, let's finish this one idea and then we'll go to that one, okay?
Yes, 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 perfect, perfect. Perfect, perfect. The implementing codes of conduct that balance accountability and restorative practice.
Try that outside.
Wow, a round of applause.
I like it, okay.
Okay?
Perfect. But although, isn't accountability a part of restorative practice? I mean, can we just say that, yeah, the accountability, does that have to be there?
We can, we can say, implement codes of conduct that support restorative practices.
Oh, I like that, too, okay.
Accountability is definitely a.
Trigger word.
Definitely a trigger.
Restorative practices include accountability. Because there seems to be a misconception, you know, partly caused by us, I'm sure, that restorative practices means we're all just lovey-dovey and hug each other and we never have any accountability, right? So that's, that's actually not the way it's supposed to work.
Right, accountability should move away from accountability being a trigger word. It shouldn't.
Right, right. But maybe we leave it out of here.
In no way.
All right, so how are we, how are we, how are we editing that?
I was just suggesting taking out accountability, either replacing it with what, responsibility or just leaving it out.
Responsibility is good. Yeah, responsibility is also.
The balance responsibility and restorative practices?
Accountability is a part of like, you know.
We're holding you accountable, right? I hear you.
All right, is that better? Oops, if I would spell it.
Itty.
Okay.
Okay, still under goal one, I think that we are starting to make some progress in this area, but we really need to focus on it a little bit more, being in compliance with the state of New Jersey's Amistad Act and Holocaust education.
We didn't finish the discipline down in the equity part. I don't think so, did we? We were going to move it down. Remember, we were going to break it out. Break it out, because working on that disproportionality needs to be our goal as a goal, we have to.
Amistad would go under to where implement strategies to promote cultural awareness among students, so do you want to, feel like you want to?
Yeah, I think that the point of having that curriculum required by the state was to make sure that the curriculum is inclusive of the entire history. So the whole child, academic, you know, being the part of the whole child that we're kind of focusing on, like the idea of erasure, you know, making sure that.
Well, we already have provide professional development, are supporting culturally responsive lesson planning, teaching and assessment, and then it seems like something could go...
Do we not have references to genocide already in there? Genocide and African-American history? Or am I remembering that from some other document? My computer just died.
My computer just died.
I think that's in the strategic.
Oh, that's a strategic plan. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
But it seems like it would fit in there easily. Shouldn't it be hard to provide professional development? And then it's, I mean, we're really continuing, right?
But now what we're doing, it's not culturally responsive curriculum or, or is it worded here? Sorry.
But I think those two elements are.
I don't know that that's really what we're talking about when we're talking about the Amistad Act.
No, I'm saying we should add something there. Like it kind of follows that, no?
I would say that it doesn't follow because I say it's, I would think that it was too specific. I mean, we're currently working on it, but it, it's not about the entire school in that sense because it doesn't relate. I'm going to try to get my thoughts together. You know, it's, it's something that we put together into the curriculum with, they've already written that curriculum. We asked for some changes to it. But when you're talking about the entire school and the goal that we have, I mean, it's something that we're already working on. We had the curriculum in our hands, but we're just like asking for it to be applied differently.
Are you saying not to specifically identify that, that area of teaching without identifying others or?
Yes, correct. I, I think to. Look at that and say Amistad and genocide, but we have a growing Asian population, but we're not saying anything about the courses for Hispanic or Asian populations being expanded is disingenuous. I know it's a requirement that we have to comply and that we're doing so because it's a state requirement, but I'd much rather have our goals be a little bit more broad-based in this area than to look at two specific guidelines that we're trying to comply with under state requirements.
So can we say the Amistad Act and Holocaust history and other genocides and then say and work towards?
Such as.
Yeah. Or can we say something about working towards, you know, a more culturally inclusive history program or?
I'd much rather have the statement be about.
Well, can we have both? Can we have the two, the compliance things that people may wonder if we're going to comply? And then also have another part which would be.
I hear what Rob is saying because if we're going to talk about compliance, then we'll need dyslexia.
Then it needs to reflect our student body, right? I mean, I think, I mean, it goes back to the culturally responsive, the cultural responsiveness that we're looking to work towards, so.
But I think that that's where I'm confused because the premise of what I'm saying is that if we don't teach, you know, the Amistad Act curriculum, African-American history separated from any other type of history, the whole point of the Amistad Act is to say that African-American history is American history. So that if we're going to ensure that the curriculum and the instruction supports the whole child, that we need to make sure that our curriculum is whole so that it's not erasing some of our history and some of, you know, this being like Columbus Day, for example, like some of the ugly things in our history are not erased from, from our history so that we are teaching the whole child in a way that is not picking and choosing what we would like to include.
That, it is a state guideline and it's something that we need to do, but by saying that specifically, is it, and, and not saying other things, other areas of, of our, of our concern or our focus, are we not leaving other things out?
Well, I think we settled that point by saying that if you do include this, you could
Amistad, Holocaust, Education Act or whatever it's called, I'm sorry, and other genocides and then and work towards integrating, you know, non-mandated other. I mean, can we somehow make clear that the first two items in the list are state mandates that we're going to comply with and we're also going to start looking at other areas? So can we just say that we're going to continue that work and add other culturally responsive, you know?
But that's what I was saying, it's not culturally responsive. It's not about.
But I, I'm trying to get at Rob's point of other, other parts of American history that reflect other demographics of students that we may have in our.
Right, but that's not why we have to be compliant with Amistad, with the Amistad Act.
The sentence could have, the sentence could have all three. I, I mean, I understand that. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying we're trying to broaden the, the lens a little bit.
Well, I don't see, what I'm saying is I don't see in this goal where we are making the curriculum more, not more, but less, oh God, how do you explain?
Less white male.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to say something about that. I think it's not pertaining to US history exactly, but in my experience, taking world history my sophomore year, I, and a lot of other students too, thought that the curriculum was really, really focused on white European history. We never learned about African history. I think we, we learned about one African guy once.
That's what we used to do. We had one sample African country in the eighties.
Yeah, we've never really got into any African history. We never got into Latin American history, although it's really, you know, rich and has a lot to offer.
And Asian history is a concern, I would imagine for many of our students.
Yeah, we really.
Yeah, that's get at. Right, we're trying to get at.
Yeah, it was really, just really focused on European history and it kind of felt very colonial, colonialist and reflecting kind of sort of the racism existing in our education system too. So I think that's something we could definitely focus on when, you know, talking about the realm of like editing curriculum or things like that.
So I mean, maybe can we, instead of trying to figure out this one particular piece at 10 o'clock at night, maybe could we try to put together a line for that that we can put in before next week? Because I think we're going to, like, we're getting a little late and we're just going to spin our wheels.
Yeah, I mean, and even if we just take, take the week, take the next few days to read through all, we've made a lot of changes and a lot of headway, I think, but.
Yeah, it's not going to kill us if we take another week to absorb.
So I'll just put a little parentheses under goal one because that's where I think it belongs. Can I just make a little note here?
A little note sounds good, though. Remind us when we come back. We were all thinking about it all week.
Also, when we go through and just as from my standpoint, some of the crossouts maybe should be looked at as rewrites or rewrite this or change. Because once it's crossed out, it looks like it's gone to me. So just.
Well, I think, I think Scott was trying to take out some stuff that's already been done, you know, like morning meeting is firmly established. We've revised the board policy on discipline to reflect restorative practices, you know, like things that are like concrete and have been.
We're talking about going forward because I think he fixed a lot of that. I think, I think Scott fixed a lot of that tonight.
No, those are still there, I mean, right now.
I'm just saying in the next several days as we make our own changes.
Well, I would ask that we don't, no one make any changes to this group talk? That we, like, everybody maybe make your own separate notes because, I mean, honestly, like, we can do this right now because we're in public doing this, but we can't work on it. No, but seriously, to all of us to work on this group document.
We've done it in policy before.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, but if you're doing it as not a quorum, that's fine, but if we're all working on the document, that's where, that constitutes a public meeting. And you know me, I'm like, this, don't violate the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank God for that.
So, yeah, so don't, so don't work on this particular document.
I'm just going to add the parentheses.
Just make your own notes. Yeah, 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 if you want to make a change now, that's fine, but after we all leave the board table and adjourn, don't touch this document. You can make your own notes and then come back with them next week and we'll try to get through things quickly and finalize this for sure next week.
Is the goal to pass it on Monday? Or do we have a?
Do we actually vote on it, Linda? Or, I don't, I don't think we actually have to vote on the board goals, right? I mean, we just.
I think we did.
Do we? Do we? Okay. I don't remember either. Okay, so, so we can do that for, for next week, we would do anyway.
Right, all this discussion should be a.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to get back, I didn't want to totally disregard your point.
Yep, so my top, thing I was concerned about was in goal two with research de-tracking of middle school math classes and promoting mixability classes at the high school level. So I've talked, so after the last board meeting, I saw it in like, within the, like, that it was a possibility and so I talked about it with some high school students and no one's had said that they would like to de-track classes or to have mixability classes. In fact, everyone has been against it and I think like personally, like, this is my opinion now, personally, I don't think it helps anyone involved in this situation. It doesn't help the lower ability students who are going to be like racing the catch-up to higher ability students. I don't think it helps the higher ability students because they're going to be slowed down and maybe like they could do more, but like the class is just mixability, so it might be like hard for them to actually like go the pace they want. And then as for the teacher, it'll be hard to keep up with like so many different abilities of, like, different, students with different abilities. So it, it might be hard for like the curriculum to go and like for the class to be.
I'm just going to slow you down a little bit there. This is a really, really difficult topic and one that we, the board has been discussing for a number of years and there are very disparate opinions on, on this particular topic. So, you know, we're not going to solve them at quarter after 10 on a, on a Monday night. But I think you'll, it will be interesting for you to hear this conversation unfold at the board table over the next year. It may change some of your opinions, it may not. We've already done this in two classes in the high school, just so you know, we've changed. And we're not like completely de-tracking and throwing everybody into a room. So that's not, that's not what we're talking about. But what we are talking about is making access to higher level classes more equitable and we're talking about more mixed ability groupings. And we've already done this in two classes and we've seen great success with one class. We did this, what was US History Honors One, right? We, two, sorry. Combined what was called the college prep and an honors class into one class with an honors option. So instead of having two separate classes of kids on a lower track and kids in a middle track, put those kids together and then some of the kids can choose the honors option. So, and now we're doing that with a second class this year with an English class after having looked at the data from doing this in the history two. So, I mean, we're actually slowly demonstrating that this is working for our students. It is helping some of the students who typically have been in lower tracks get into higher tracks. And that's kind of the goal, right? Is to have everyone move towards a richer academic experience while they're here and not consign particular students to a lower track all throughout high school.
Also, I might recommend that if you'd like, we're putting together an advisory panel. We want students to be on that panel. I'm meeting tomorrow afternoon with the people who are organizing this. You want to be part of that? That would be a chance for you to have a voice.
What's the advisory panel for?
Sorry?
What is the panel?
What's the advisory panel for? Like what?
It's actually an advisory panel for the middle school and Dr. Christina who are steering this research, but we want to put along the way. So this would be a great opportunity for you to put yourself out.
For the middle school you're talking about?
Correct.
It's about math? So it's a math advisory?
We wanted to suck the graduates of the middle school program to get a sense of what, their, their perspective at the high school level.
On their experience at the middle school level? What's, so the idea is to get.
The math de-tracking research we're doing is for the middle school.
Okay.
But we'd like to put an advisory panel together, which would include all kinds of people, including some students from the high school and the middle school and parents, of course.
To talk about whether they are interested in de-tracking or?
In, on our thinking and the research we're doing.
Cool.
I think you were starting to ask the question we did after the first year of these honors and options, asked the students and the teachers there how they felt about it at the end of the program to see how the students felt and whether they thought it was effective or not. And I forget the actual results from that, but we, it's in one of our post meetings where we talked about it after the fact, how the, how the students felt and how the teachers felt about it.
And overall, it was positive, which is why we continue to expand it to other, and just so you know, I mean, as we've had discussions around the board table, you know, the consensus hasn't been, you know, unanimous. We have some disagreements about it. We know that there are certain groups of parents that have disagreements about it. It's, it's a very, it's one of those lightning rod kind of topics, but it's something that from an equitable perspective, we're continuing to investigate and moving towards more equitable distribution of our students and throughout their classes.
Okay, so, so I was in a Spanish five honors option class last year and so.
Spanish, we don't have a Spanish five honors.
Yeah, but we do integrate the two classes, but not, not quite the same model.
Oh, different levels.
But it's like, I guess it's like sort of similar in a sense, but, so what ended up happening was that we, so the only difference between them was that the honors students had a harder test compared to the CP students. It's like, there's not much of a difference and in my opinion at least, the difference within the test was not great enough to consider like it being 0.5 weighted EPA higher compared to.
I don't want to, I don't want to get into the whole weighted and like, just not right now, okay? So, I mean, that's like a, that's a, that's a conversation for another day and gets very detailed and. Everyone's going to start yelling. Yeah, well, just not, now's not, well, but now's just not the time to do it. Twenty after 10 when we're trying to get through it. But we will, trust me, there are going to be plenty of conversations at the board table about this in the next year, both as we move through the.
Well, I think Zayo's concern is that we're establishing the board goals right now and I don't know if you'd had to finish them tonight, but.
We're not, and we're not voting on them until next week. Yeah, like, as I said, in our workshop meetings, we, there's no voting, it's just for discussion and then we will move forward. But this has been a board goal since last year and is unlikely to change for this year. So, I mean, it's not like we're going to have a conversation and we're like, all right, let's throw that goal. I mean, this has been a concerted effort of this board for a number of years. So this is something that we're going to continue to investigate and, you know, we have done this now at Bardell, there used to be tracking at Bardell, there is no longer tracking at Bardell. All of the, the kids and the, you know, families are, seem very well adjusted to that at this point. Kids are moving into the middle school all, you know, in, in the same classes and then once we get to the middle school is where that, those divisions start to happen. So. I think it's important to note too, that like the other part, a corollary to that is that our, we have board goals related to differentiation of instruction because it's not a simple thing for teachers to do, of course. And so that, I think our board goals, at least last year, they recognized the need for, you know, significant amounts of professional development for teachers so that they could actually make this work, not just be thrown into the classroom with kids of all different backgrounds, academic backgrounds. Okay, so I think on the whole, we're kind of in a better place with the goals. We'll do a little bit more fine tuning. People will come next week with any other more granular changes that they want to make and then we'll look to adopt those next week. So I don't have anything else from my president's report other than to just a quick update and if you guys, yeah, want to hit the road. It is late. Thank you. I know Mark had talked last month about some of the issues regarding the, the proposed pilot in town and how that's moving forward. I don't have any additional updates on that. I had talked about the idea of possibly a resolution for the delegate assembly around that. I have not done anything with that yet just because it's, it doesn't seem like that bill is going anywhere. I did a tiny bit of research on that and the bill was actually originally introduced in 2016, passed the Senate and then completely stalled in the assembly and it's been reintroduced this year, made it out of a sitting committee, but now hasn't gone anywhere in the full Senate, so. I put a call into Senator Sweeney's office, that should be fun to see if I get a call back from his office. Is this the anti-pilot bill you're referring to? Yeah, well, it's not anti-pilot, it's modifying the pilot law. I mean, it actually says in this legislation that the money that's collected, the money that is collected on a pilot would be distributed in the same fashion that any other money that's collected by the municipality is distributed, which makes sense. You know, that there's this weird carve-out that if you make these tax abatements, then the municipality can just cut the district out of those funds entirely is just utterly bizarre. And I think the piece that maybe Mark was kind of struggling with last month to explain is that this doesn't mean that we're going to get less money. I mean, we're still going to set our budget and we're still going to get the same amount of money that we would get whether there's an abatement or not. The issue is, it's going to make it fall more heavily on those of us who are already taxpayers. And that's whether you're in an apartment or whether you're in a home or whatever because the other existing apartment building owners, they're going to see their, you know, their share of that increase. It's, it kind of goes to the issue of ratables, right? I mean, the more ratables there are, the less we all pay. We saw that two years ago where we had the increase that we were going to have, we thought it was going to be what, maybe like a $250 impact on each home? And then all of a sudden, all these new ratables came online and it was only a $75 impact on each home. So it's not that we would get any less money, it's that it's going to redistribute that money that we collect more on some, you know, the people who are already paying the taxes. And to my mind, that just exacerbates the tensions that are already here. We don't need additional tensions. I mean, the reason that our, one of the reasons that our town is the way our town is is because we do have this also like housing segregation, right? We have these little pockets of these people live here and these people live here and these people live there. That's only getting exacerbated with these new developments. These new developments aren't tending to be terribly diverse. They're very homogenous. And so if we not only have these, you know, the tensions we already have, but then we're adding these additional economic taxes of, oh, well, I'm paying more in taxes and you're paying.
For up to 30 years.
Yeah, no, exactly. I mean, it really is.
Not for three or five years, for up to 30 years.
Right, exactly. It could potentially be this longstanding and we're seeing this play out in other communities. And again, Senator Sweeney and I don't agree on a whole heck of a lot of things, but this is one thing I'm willing to pick up the phone and say, hey, what can I do to help you on this? Because I think he's right. I think it's not, it's just absolutely bizarre that this law has been, you know, is on the books that municipalities can cut out the districts when they collect this money. So, and sets up then this tension between the district and the municipality where we've never had this kind of tension with the borough where, you know, I mean, I don't think that they're not trying to do the right thing for the schools, but, you know, it, it's kind of, you know, you're like, hey, I could get this big chunk. It's hard to say like, oh, all right, well, I'll give 60% of that to you. "Oh, all right, well, I'll give 60% of that to you." But, it, it, you know, it, that, that intent shouldn't even be there. So, so I will continue to, um, see if I can think of some way to, um, work on that on a state level while we try to resolve it, um, while we try to resolve it on a local level, but I think the way that we are gonna resolve it on a working, on the local level is by all of us working together. Um, and to continue to impress upon the council and the mayor that we've always had a collegial working relationship. We wanna continue to have a collegial working relationship, and this is one of the ways that we do that, that we, um, that we display this, um, united front to the community, um, that we're working together, you know, working together to, um, you know, keep taxes down for all of our residents, not just for little pockets of our residents. And I understand that development is important and we wanna encourage development, but we need to do it in a way that doesn't exacerbate issues that we already have in town. So, that's the case that I wanna continue to make to the, to the mayor and to the council, and the mayor has always been supportive of the schools, um, and I, you know, I don't have any reason to believe that she won't continue to be.
I, I wanted to ask if you, um, had any feeling about what the mayor could do at the state level, if there's any reaching out that we could ask her to do?
Um, I'm happy to, to discuss. We were supposed to have a meeting Wednesday morning, but, um, she wasn't able to make that, but certainly the next time that we, that we meet, all, I mean, that, that piece of it hasn't come up yet because I think she's still grappling with what this is gonna look like on a local level, but I'm certainly happy to approach that with her and I'll certainly let her know anything that, you know, I'm able to do at the state level with the, with this. And I'll, if I can before the next meeting, I'll try to, I'll see if I hear back from Senator Sweeney's office and, um, let you guys know whether I do or don't, and then also try to get in touch with Senator Diagnon, which I haven't done yet.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Sure. Um, and, okay, so does anybody have anything for old business? New business?
Hello. Hi. Sorry to do this to everybody.
No, no, no.
10:25, but I'll make it quick. Um, so, um, a long time ago, I guess like, what was during a personnel meeting or somewhere that we were with, Ms. Zoe was present, and she had made an offhand remark that she was thinking of creating what was called a learning lab, um, in the middle school to have an alternate kind of space instead of the library, um, because she was not really comfortable with the middle schoolers hanging out with high schoolers.
She didn't really feel much of it.
Um, but then I had a couple of parents come up to me post-back-to-school night, um, with some concerns that I thought were valid. So I, I wanted to ask you some of the questions that maybe you could get the answers to and bring back to the board next week. So, what I wanted to know is if this learning lab means that middle schoolers are no longer able to go to the high school library?
Well, first of all, I, I'm thinking that it might, I'm hoping the parents reached out to Mrs. Osemeier first.
Yes.
They did.
Yes.
Did she respond?
Not satisfactorily.
I'm sorry?
Not satisfactorily.
Not satisfactorily.
And I waited.
Uh, so, uh, I mean, the next step would be, and we have a whole, you know, I put a whole chain of command up on the website, would be for them to approach me about their concerns. So, I can't answer the first question because I'm not sure what Mrs. Osemeier's intent is.
Okay, well, you can answer it for me in that I was present when this was introduced with Ruth and Ann and I present, and I don't, I didn't realize it was going to be taking material from one library and moving it into this classroom space, because there are other issues that go along with that. Um, if you move, say, middle school books from the high school library, um, that's sort of an age group that reading level, there might be ninth and 10th graders that aren't reading ninth and 10th level books that are slower readers and-
Which is why they would wanna go to the high school and tap into those books.
No, they'd wanna be in the middle, they'd want access to those middle school books, but they're not gonna walk over to the learning lab, you're not gonna have high schoolers going over to the middle school and vice versa. But when the media center was all in one building, they had access to the full range of material, you know what I'm saying?
Right. I, I can't imagine that anybody would not allow a student to go into the media center, regardless of his birth age.
That's just what I wanna clarify, so if you could find that out.
I'll find that out, but I would also encourage you, if you have contact with these parents in the near future, reach out to me so I can directly respond to them.
Well, I understand that, at least one of them did, so.
But I, but I definitely, well, look, I can't say definitely, I'll check in with Mrs. Osemeier, but I can't imagine-
I don't wanna play, you know, he said, she said.
If a kid came up to us and said, "Hey, I'd like to go to the high school media center," we'd say, "No, you can't, not allowed." Uh, and I know Mrs. Osemeier well enough, I can't imagine she would put a clap down like that.
Right, but it's a good question to ask, and how? So, say, a middle schooler does, they want none of the books in the middle school, you know, they read those, or they're at a higher level, they're reading whatever author they're choosing in the other library, they wanna go there, what's the process?
Right.
Yeah, I think independently of whether the parents make it up the chain of command, it is something that the board, or I, as a board member, am interested in finding out about. Not to, like, you know, complain to Mrs. Osemeier about my kids' reading experience, but just, we'd like to know, or I would like to know.
Well, and honestly, I didn't realize that one negated the other.
No, I didn't realize either.
I thought it was, you know, an extra, which, you know, would be fine, you know, more computers in another space and an alternate learning area, not gonna argue with that, but in one lieu of another, one left inferior space and for the middle schoolers.
I'll, I'll, I'll get back to the board. But look, I just wanna be sure that we understand why Mrs. Osemeier carved this space out. I don't think it's necess, well, indirectly because she doesn't want high school kids and middle school kids interacting, but they don't have to, on frequent occasions, but ever since she's gotten here, I feel like she's working hard to, to foster a clear middle school identity.
I respect that, I do, um, but when she said it in front of us at that meeting, that's exactly why she said she was doing it, and she reiterated, reiterated that to this parent. Um, and the problem is, you know, we're, you know, a small school, and, you know, sometimes it just doesn't work out in the first world.
Right, and I think the issue is, I didn't realize that it was removing a fully functional